Can y'all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? We have Olivia Tamayo and Bria Figueroa from Riverside Middle School, and they're the volleyball players. They're gonna lead us in the pledge. So, young ladies, can y'all please come up here? We'll do the pledge and then the Texas pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, ladies. If you hold up one second, Colin is gonna take your picture. Okay, if y'all can please remain standing and remove your hats, Pastor Long is gonna come and give us the invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Father God, as we come before you, we unbel ourselves before your throne and ask that you lead this meeting by your Holy Spirit. Come, Holy Spirit, and lead this meeting. Lord, we're so thankful for Bastrop, Texas. May your blessings be poured out upon our city. And, Lord, we just thank you for the wisdom and knowledge and discernment and understanding that you give to our council as they are counselors and make decisions for our city. Give them the grace to walk out what you tell them. Now, lead them tonight. Lord, we not only pray for the council and the mayor and the ones that make decisions like that, but we pray for every employee of this city. Lord, especially those that have had to work out in the heat. And, Lord, we're looking for that cool fall weather and the rains that are coming, and we're believing for them. Lord, we thank you for everybody that sits at this table and on these side tables, our city manager, our city secretary. Lord, and, Lord, I pray for the law enforcement community that watches for us. Thank you for the Bastrop Police Department and the Fire Department. Lord, we just thank you that we are blessed here, and we praise you for continuing and giving favor to our city as it grows. Lord, some of us have been here when it was not growing. It was a small town. But now we have a city, and we have the people to do good for us, and we're thankful. So, Lord, we're thankful, and we're thankful for you for bringing together those who make the right and righteous decisions. We know that righteousness exalts a nation. It also exalts a community. So righteous decisions, Lord, is what we're praying for tonight. Be with each one. Keep us safe, healthy, and in your presence. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Long. All right. Now, we're gonna move on to the mayor's report. I don't have much on my report. Just last week, we was fortunate enough to be involved to help kick off Hispanic Heritage Month at First National Bank. And then Saturday, no, Friday, I was over at Silver Pines. I got invited to Silver Pines Rehab Center, and it was, they had Alzheimer's awareness event. And so, all the residents there, they were outside to greet me, but they were having a great celebration. I got to see Mr. Lawson and hang out with him. And so, but anyway, kudos to everyone over at Silver Pines. They do a great job with the residents there. Everyone there was enjoying themselves. They greeted me with a friendly smile, and they never made a guy feel so special. So, thank you, Silver Pines, for inviting me and having me over. I really enjoyed myself. So, all right, on to the council report. We're gonna start from our left. Councilmember Fossler.
Okay, good evening, y'all. Let's see, it's been a water-filled time, it's just a big water time in Bastrop. I went to the TCEQ Open House with Ms. Rita Ward. She might be speaking about it later. I went to the TCEQ Open House for the Camp Swift Regional Wastewater Treatment Expansion. And then the next day, went to Office Hours for the ASR, that Aquifer Recovery and Storage Project. I went to that in Smithville. So, lots of learning around water, lots of feeling very protective and also very curious. It's fun when you're being protective and curious. And I also wanna say happy birthday to Eden East Farms. They have had their fifth birthday in Bastrop, Texas. We're so grateful. They are an organic farm in just the north end of Bastrop, and they sell vegetables, organic vegetables, from their driveway every Wednesday and Saturday. And they had a fifth-year birthday celebration last Saturday. And then coming up is always gonna be a bird report in my council member report. There's a bird sculpture reveal this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. across from City Hall. So, if you'll join us, you'll see the next bird sculpture. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you, Councilmember Fossler. Councilmember Plunkett.
I have confidence that the rest of my council members will take care of most things. But I just wanted to shout out to Dory and the EDC for the last couple of nights, or last night and this afternoon. We had a Austin Business Journal Growth Summit, and it very, very well attended, and over 500 people came for lunch to learn about the growth that's coming to Bastrop. And just very excited about everybody's excitement for what's going on here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Plunkett. Mayor Protem Kirkland.
Yeah, I'd like to echo the thanks and congratulations to Dory and the EDC for the meet and greet we had yesterday with the executives of the Hyperloop Plaza Companies and the Austin Business Journal event today. Those were, those are fabulous. We had a lot of boards and commission interviews. We all did that as a council. And then I attended the City of Austin's ASR Meet and Greet Project thing in Smithville and stood with Stan Gertis. And in my part, I'm representing the City of Bastrop in our opposition to that project. And so, stood there with Stan Gertis and answered questions of everyone in the room who were opposed to that project and what they can do to help fight against it. And so, we are going to continue that fight. And on our next Chamber of Commerce luncheon, I will be given, giving the response from the City of Bastrop after the City of Austin speaks to our Chamber of Commerce there as well. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to really thank you, Mayor, because the mayor spoke at our Rotary Club Lunch last week and gave an update of all the great things going on in the city to the Rotary Club members. So, it was very informative, very exciting. So, I just thank you for taking time to update us on that. Also, this past Saturday, we wanna welcome a new business that's on Chestnut Street. It's called Beautifully Wild, and it's a flower truck, but they are actually in a brick and mortar now. So, their address is 714 Chestnut Street. It's between the Food Trailers Court and the Fire Station, that building on the corner. And if you've been in Bastrop a really, really long time, like me and the two people next to me, you would remember it as Thurba Smith's Gas Station, right? Where the monkey and the iguana. So, anyway, it's got a lot of memories in that building, but I'm happy to say we have a great new business coming. So, please support them. And the last thing I wanna do is remind everyone, this Thursday, which is the 25th, 6:00 right here at City Hall, there'll be a planning and zoning meeting, and there is a request to rezone 1005 Pecan Street. Now, that, you might know it as Marie LeBlanc's former house that used to be there and is not there anymore. It's the house they took down behind the yellow gas station. But there is a request for upzoning from neighborhood to mixed use. So, if you're, if you want any input, any information, if you want to have input, please come to that meeting Thursday at 6:00. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Meyer. Councilmember Low.
Good afternoon. It's good to see everybody here, seeing some faces here I hadn't seen, and hopefully y'all will return. And, you know, we want everybody to get involved, so this is really good to see. This past week was pretty exciting for me personally. We got to play with the Peterson Brothers at Neighbors, had a fantastic night, great crowd, full of energy and community spirit, so we really were digging that. On the city side, we conducted interviews for the boards and commissions, and we've had some really awesome candidates. So, we're thankful to everyone that applied and your willingness to serve and get involved and make a difference. So, I'll plea again, I encourage all residents to get involved with city government so you can stay connected to what's happening and shape our community's future. Yesterday, I also attended the Hyperloop Plaza Meet and Greet. Great event, had a chance to meet a lot of wonderful people, and they're excited about the opportunities ahead. Also, too, today, I joined the inaugural, and it won't be the last, Austin Business Journal Growth Summit right here in Bastrop. So, excellent event. Big thanks to Dory and her team for doing a great job of putting it all together and showcasing Bastrop's role in region's growth. So, Bastrop continues to be a place where culture, community, and opportunity come together, and I'm proud to serve. So, thank you all for coming out today, and thank you much.
Thank you, Councilmember Low. And yes, thank you to Dory and everyone at the EDC. Dory's a, she's a hustler for this city, y'all. I can, I can say that, that lady, she goes forward for our city, and we appreciate everything she does. So, all right, now on to the city manager's report.
Well, while they were having fun at Hyperloop Plaza and everywhere else they get to have fun at, the rest of us are here working. So, we have a budget to deliver today. Colin, will you advance this slide, please? So, first, let's start off by reminding everybody, we are canceling the October 7th meeting. That is national night out, everybody. So, folks will be not here, but they're gonna be at the area park. So, please make sure you're at a park. And that's also to coincide that we are moving, instead of the second and the fourth Tuesdays of the month, we're moving to the first and third Tuesdays of the month. So, it's a reminder, that starts in October. We have the bid opening for Water Farm in Linden on September 25th. Super excited to get that hurry up and done. The bridge is on time and on budget. The water plant, we have the final closeout in process. The wastewater treatment plant, the planning continues. It's on target tonight. You will see an engineer of record that coincides with the timeline that keeps us in check. And then the bird sculpture unveiling is at noon on, yes, is at noon on Saturday. So, if you haven't seen it, it's going up next to the convention center. It's a giant eagle. So, that's it.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm gonna read a proclamation. For those who don't know, it is Fall Prevention Awareness Week, and it's, fall prevention is something that is vital for our older living citizens. We know that as you get older, your balance gets off, or, you know, you're not as strong at times. And so, it was, it's a great proclamation to have. So, whereas falls are the leading cause of fatal and non-fatal injuries among older adults, and whereas falls are among, are most common cause of traumatic brain injuries and can lead to depression, loss of mobility, and loss of functional independence, and whereas the financial impact of falls among older adults is expected to rise as population ages potentially increase, and potentially reaching 101 billion nationally by 2030, 2030, excuse me. And whereas the fear of falling can cause many older adults to limit their activity, which reduces mobility and physical fitness and further increases the risk of falling. And whereas comprehensive clinical assessments, exercise programs to improve balance and health, medication management, vision correction, and reduction in home hazards have all been shown to reduce the occurrence and severity of falls. And whereas the City of Bastrop, in partnership with the Area Agency on Aging and Capital Area Council of Governments, encourages older adults to participate in evidence-based programs such as Matter of Balance and to adopt strategies that reduce falls, including exercise programs to improve balance and strength, medication management, vision improvement, and home safety measures. And now therefore, I, Ishmael Harris, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hear, proclaim the week of September 22nd through 26th, 2025, as Falls Prevention Awareness Week in the City of Bastrop, and I encourage all citizens to participate in programs and activities that promote fall prevention and health, safety, and well-being for older adults. And when this whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Bastrop to be affixed on this 23rd day of September 2025. Thank you. Do we have someone here, Michael? No?
I do have a comment, though, Mayor. We have, the City of Bastrop Recreation Center has a falls prevention class. They do them every once in a while, and they fill up really quickly. And there's one this Thursday in honor of this week. There's two spots left. It's called Safe Steps, and it's called Fall Prevention for Older Adults. So, it's this Thursday at 1:00 p.m. at the City of Bastrop Recreation Center. Two spots left, if y'all wanna sign up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fossler. All right, on to Agenda Item, Agenda Item 5A, Work Session. Madam City Manager.
We run a discussion of possible action or recommendations received front of community for improvements to Mayfest Park and modifications to the City of Bastrop Experience Bastrop Parks Master Plan.
So, thank you, Mayor. As you're aware, we put out a survey and simultaneously are going through a feasibility study for Mayfest Park. That study should be wrapping up relatively quickly. Thank you. Laura's gonna change out some documents that you have on a different item. And I'm sorry, I'm a little bit discombobulated. I need to get to my PowerPoint. For some background, the Parks Master Plan was a 10-year master plan for parks, and it was a guide for direction. And most of the projects are CIP-related, meaning they're capital improvement projects, and they have a general opinion of probable cost, OPC listed. If you recall, Mayfest Park was excluded, i.e., it had plans for a soccer park as opposed for a rodeo. So, Mayfest Park, the information is very, very limited with no opinion of probable cost on the item. So, it included removal of the arena soccer fields, and community came out and said, no, that's not what we're going to do. So, it was too close to the adoption of the plan, and there was no cost estimate. And so, there are no renderings or opinion of probable cost, which is what we're doing today. So, recently, we've talked about a covering over the rodeo arena and what that could do to the venues that are at the arena more than a rodeo. It can include concerts and other outdoor events. And so, you directed me to begin the due diligence, and that's, that's what we're doing So, the other items in the master plan is we are increasing staffing, we're closing the gap, and the budget has been increased. So, of the responses, which is what we're doing today, the vast majority who responded, we had three categories. They were community members, they were industry experts, meaning they know about rodeos and arenas and things like that, and the others are attendees. And the vast majority, they said they wanted a covered arena. They said they wanted trails, trees, and greenery because it was much too hot out there. They want RV hookups and wash racks, and they want an improved community atmosphere. The covered arena goes hand in hand with seating. So, it was not a surprise that those were the results, because we've been talking about that, what it feels like the entire three years I've been here. We've been talking about Mayfest Park. And so, the other thing they're asking for is they want diverse event programming. They want concerts, festivals, markets, and other family-friendly activities. They want us to retain our small-town, family-oriented atmosphere. And again, they want better restrooms, seating, concessions, and parking, including shades, trees, and trails. So, the industry experts, those folks who actually use the arena and know better than most of us, say the weather related to cancellations and limitations, so the cover is absolutely necessary. And the RV hookups with stalls and wash racks also absolutely necessary for that arena to have full utilization. And then we need better stabilization for parking for those trailers who come in weighing very heavy. And so, if it's not an improved surface and we have massive ruts out there, it tends to cause damage to axles, et cetera. And then the barriers to booking are facility condition and availability. Folks still don't know that the arena is open every single day, and lack of advertising, that they don't know the availability of the arena. The attendee said, we need shade and it's hot, which also equals cover, and that seating was uncomfortable and limited. Now, we did upgrade the seating in the boxes, but the bleachers are what the bleachers are, and they are not covered and they are exposed to the elements. And then they like that the venue is authentic, and it's a representation of family values, but again, prohibited because it's hot out there. And there is also, among this group, a strong appetite for other events echoing what the community said. So, common themes, multipurpose, it should have an economic development impact, it needs to be ADA accessible, we've gotta be able to park, we've gotta have better communication, and we need a long-term vision. I think what I heard the most, and it was probably the most resonating, is don't just put a cover over it and call it a day. It needs significant improvement if we're going to utilize it as an appropriate venue. So, again, they've emphasized potential beyond rodeo, we need better ADA accessibility. We do have some ramps on one side, one side of the venue, but as we expand seating to the other side, we'll have to address accessibility on how to get to the other side. And again, don't, don't come at me with any half-baked solutions, and that was a quote. Traffic is a concern. The arena surface quality, even though we've brought in dirt, we've dedicated a tractor, it still feels like every single group has a specific, different need, so. So, where do we go from here? Communication signage infrastructure, we've talked about that. So, we've talked about public engagement, we sought council direction, we're gonna incorporate those amendments, we've gotta go to zoning commission, and then city council approval for anything that comes through. The feasibility study is expected to be done in the next two weeks, and so, we'll bring that to council and see what, what the experts say. Is this an appropriate arena? Is it an appropriate place for an arena? What other changes do we have to do? And then we'll go through any special amendments or warrants to our own code on noise, et cetera, et cetera, operations, and then bring that back to city council. We still have to go to the Parks Board also with that feasibility study. So, no surprises, everything we kind of already knew, but it's good to have it on paper. Any questions?
Mayor Protem Kirkland.
I think that two of the most important questions for me, which are not really addressed directly in this conversation, is is the arena large enough, as is the space where the dirt is? And I suspect the answer is yes, but I just, you know, I want confirmation on that, because it would be very painful to try to enlarge it after putting things like a cover over it. And the second thing is how much, what seating capacity do we think that we need? And then how does that compare to what we have? And I would anticipate we would look at the types of things we would want to do there based upon the community feedback, and then figure out, you know, if we're gonna have concerts and we wanna attract an artist of a certain caliber, how many, you know, do we need to be able to get 5,000 people in there, for instance, you know, that kind of thing? So, how, what seating capacity do we need? And then comparing that to what we have, you know, a plan for expanding the seating, because, you know, you could just look at what's there, and it's pretty obvious, one side is missing seating, so you could just fill that in, right? But if that's not enough, I don't wanna just do that, because we might need to also go upwards and add additional rows to the existing seating, and when we put it in on the other side, put in more rows. So, just an acknowledgement of, you know, counting the number of rears that will fit in those seats and making sure it's the right number. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. So, regarding the size of the arena, I spoke with rodeo people, and the size is actually what they said was perfect, is perfect, because there's no standard size of an arena. But for the, for anything that's needing to be held there, rodeo-related right now or in the future, the size is fine, which would be fine for other things that the public wants us to see. However, the seating, right, because we don't have the seating now. I will say the Saturday night, this past homecoming rodeo, the Saturday night, there were 4,000 people there, not all sitting down, there was standing room only, but that shows you that the demand is there. They will even come and stand just to go. So, we need to base the demand also on what people are doing now just to even get there, you know, and stand up all night long. So, Sylvia, my question to you is you want, so the next step is to present to us all the amendments before we want to adopt them or take them to the master plan, is that right? So, no, no motion, no action tonight?
No, tonight, it's an update, because we did close the survey results, and then I will bring you an additional update when the feasibility study comes in. We'll share that with the Parks Board first. We can cherry pick what, what's, you know, appropriate and what isn't, and then we'll bring those recommendations forward to the council.
Great. The other thing I just kinda wanted to think about, too, and it was really important, I'm glad you said this, Sylvia, was people, and I remember Mr. Larianas, when we talked about the rodeo, saying, don't just do this halfway. If you're gonna do it, do it right. Because we don't wanna throw good money after bad, like, why would we expand parking if we don't even need to expand it, if we don't have a cover on an arena where we can't even get that many people in there in the seating? So, we really need to think of those steps all being important and working together. So, I absolutely think when, because I'm gonna say when, when we do this. It's not if, it's gonna be when. We need to do it right, and I think we will do it right, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Meyer. And Mayor Protem Kirkland, you're absolutely right about the seats. You know, I'm not a promoter or anything, but I would think if I'm wanting to go to a location, I'm gonna wanna make a certain amount of money. And if I can't get a certain amount of people to come in at the gate and sit down in that venue, I'm not gonna be interested. So, you're absolutely correct in that, and as far as how we're trying to expand the usage of there and having activities and events, it definitely is gonna determine that. So, it's a good point.
And Mayor, I think that we could even count seats that would go in the dirt area. Like, we could put down, I've heard of a chemical you can spray in it that'll make it a very hard, concrete-like surface temporarily, and that they've used that in some arenas so that you can put chairs on it, or you roll out, you know, wooden supports that basically wood floor, that you just lay over the dirt. But anyway, I mean, I think we could also count those seats for something like a concert.
All right, okay. All right, thank you.
The arena currently sits 1,724 people, and that's in the bleacher area. But, you know, to your point, I had Memorial Coliseum back home, and we had Buck Day's rodeo that went on for two weeks, and in between the rodeo was concerts. And we sure did transition that dirt with a floating floor over it that allowed for the concerts and that music setup to happen and be taken down very quickly.
All right, all right, thank you. Thank you, Madam City Manager. On to our staff report. Receive a presentation on the Honored Monthly Financial Report for the period ending in August 2025. Ms. Laura.
As always, I'll be happy to pull out any slide that y'all would like to talk As always, I'll be happy to pull out any slide that y'all would like to talk to about directly. Otherwise, I'm going to hit y'all with some highlights. We are happy to report positive bottom line across all funds. Sorry. With revenue exceeding forecast by 9.4% and expenditures under forecast by 32.3%. The general fund overall revenue is within .01 of forecast in terms of funds that's related to a deficit of $18,252 below forecast. Sales taxes less than forecast by 3.8%. General fund, that equates to a deficit of $310,000. Property tax proceeds are over forecast by 4.12% or 227K. So property tax still seems to offset the shortfall of sales tax currently. Impact fees continue to remain above forecast revenue, exceeding forecast by 14.7%. That equates to almost 450K. Water wastewater revenue is exceeding forecast by 1.73%, as well as BP&L revenue is below forecast by 1.31%, which equates to a deficit of 114K. Hot proceeds are exceeding forecast by 8% and development services are exceeding forecast by 20.3%. Not a lot to report in regards to expenditures, everybody's kind of wrapping up the end of the fiscal year. General fund is actual running comparable to forecast by 97%. Water wastewater is running 95.3% of projections with BP&L running 4.3 below their forecast. Hot funds have exceeded forecast by 1%. This is mostly due to the Discover Bastrop reorg design, and we do anticipate at the end of the year, we bring in y'all a final budget amendment adjustment, that'll probably be in October. Development services, actual expenses are 93.4% of their forecast. Do y'all have any questions for me?
Mayor Protem Kirkland.
The sales tax miss of 310,000, have you looked at that in any kind of detail or have you even contemplated what might have caused the sales tax to be lower in the months where it was lower than, I mean, just anything, like there was a freak snowstorm and, you know?
Well, I can definitely tell you this pattern has been trending since about February. Some may equate that to the beginning of tariffs. We can definitely say, but that's when this pattern of, of less than expected sales revenue began.
And in our new budget, the one we're discussing tonight, did we set our sales tax baseline? I think I heard that we were doing a 1%.
It's actually 2. It's actually 2.2%. It's 200,000 above last year's, very minimal.
But is it 200,000 above last year's collection or 200,000 above last year's budget?
Last year's budget.
Okay.
And there's a couple of things that play into that. I, again, was very, very conservative.
Well, but that would make it 500,000 more.
That would make it 500,000 more. However, we have a lot of things coming online in 2026, so I, I feel we're going to be able to bridge that gap.
Okay.
And then that inverse relationship with property tax, you see at our lower rate and lower value, property taxes are higher, so they'll make me crazy again trying to explain that.
Yeah, I understand. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Meyer.
Yes, this really isn't a question, but it does pertain to the hot funds, and I just want the public to understand, when you mentioned Discover Bastrop, there are a lot of, there's a lot of confusion sometimes because we're up here in the weeds and we know all the names of everything and who does what and all that, but it gets a little confusing for the public. So I just wanted to explain that before, there was a contractor called Visit Bastrop. It was a destination marketing organization that the city contracted with. That will be no longer after the end of September, October 1st, that will come underneath the city of Bastrop, which is called Discover Bastrop. So all of that will be managed within the city. There's no contractor, there's nothing else going on anymore that's underneath the house of the city. So I just wanted the people to understand what Discover Bastrop and Visit and all that. Visit's away, that animal's gone, new animal, Discover Bastrop under the city roof is going to be October 1st.
Thank you, Councilmember Meyer. All right. Thank you, Ms. Laura. All right. Now we're on to citizen comments. We have several tonight. I'll go through the citizens who did not wish to speak, and then we'll call the ones who signed up to speak, to speak on those. There's one for an agenda item specifically that would like to speak, and we'll get to that when the agenda item comes. Thank you, Michael. Okay. This will be added to that, so if you can bear with me, please. All right. All right. So up first, I have Stephanie Jenkins. She just wishes, she does not want to speak, but she's writing in in her opposition to any zoning change for the house on Pecan Street next to the gas station. She actually gave us two, but they're saying the same thing. Next up, I have Kathy and Larry Albers. They do not wish to speak, but they would like to support, I mean, record their opposition to agenda item 9D. Please do not allow the rezoning requests, keep the EC employment center zoning. We have another from Herb Goldsmith. He does not wish to speak, but he would like to record his opposition to agenda item 9A. We have Robert Clemmons. He does not wish to speak, but he would like to record his support for the Paul Quinn AME Church Bell Tower. We have George Higgins. He does not wish to speak, but he would like to record his support for the Paul Quinn AME We have Glenda Searls. She does not wish to speak. Ms. Glenda, you did not indicate on here what it was before, what it's for. Is it okay if I assume, because I know, or do I need her to actually say what she opposes?
I'm supporting the Paul Quinn Bell Tower.
Okay. Will that work, Stan? Does she need to?
Summarize.
Summarize? Okay. All right. She is here to support the Paul Quinn Tower. Ms. Jackson, or I don't know what the first letter, was that Wanda, Tondu, Junda? Sorry, I can't read the first letter. Jackson.
Yeah.
Ma'am? Oh, okay. You do not wish to speak, but you don't have anything on here whether you oppose.
I also live at the Paul Quinn Church.
Okay. And you're in, and what is your stance?
I live at the Bell Tower.
Okay. Thank you. She's here for the Bell Tower. We have Cecilia Serna. You did not check whether or not you wish to speak or do not wish to speak, but I assume you don't want to speak and it's about agenda item.
I want to speak, but last time I checked it, you told me that I checked the wrong things.
No, no. So when that happened, you, you checked. You can check a citizen's comments or agenda items. You have to put the agenda item if you want to speak on the agenda item. If it's just citizen comments, then just check that, that helps me out tremendously. So would you like to speak?
I'd like to.
Okay. I'll put you in the mix of the people that's going to speak. I'm just going to get through those who aren't real quick. And we have Tammy Aldrich Taylor. She does not wish to speak, but she says she is in favor of a grant approval for Paul Quinn Church of Bastrop, Texas. All right. Thank you to everyone who put in those citizen comments. Now we will move to those who would like to speak. First up, we have Barbara Clemmons. And she wishes to speak on the Paul Quinn AME restoration. Can you please, good afternoon, can you please give us your name and address, please? You'll have three minutes.
Yes. My name is Barbara Clemmons. I'm at 2013 Pecan Street, Bastrop, Texas.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I'm here to speak in favor of the restoration for Paul Quinn AME Church. I just wanted to say that as a child, growing up here in Bastrop, Paul Quinn was one of our churches that we, every summer, we went to Paul Quinn for our vacation Bible school. And to see or think that the church is tumbling or is not being restored, you know, really works parts in my heart. So I wanted to let you know that this is a church that has been in our past for many, many years. As you can see, it is 150 years old. And I'm not 150 years, but I was here as a child, and this church played such a significant part in our growing up, especially all the children on the South End, as well as the children on the North End. We walked to Paul Quinn every summer so that we would get the opportunity to participate in the Vacation Bible School. I do know that Paul Quinn has been instrumental in the community. I can remember Paul Quinn making sandwiches. My husband is a member of that church, and taking those sandwiches to homeless people all over Austin. They have sold, the fact that they have did so many things for the children here in Bastrop. And now presently, Paul Quinn, a lot of the members have passed on, so there's a need, there's a need to respect the building as well as the people. There aren't as many people there now, but the building needs to be restored. So I come tonight to ask the city, as well as the city council and the city manager, if you would consider helping that church because it is a significant part here in the South End for African-Americans. And the church does not just house African-Americans, they also give concerts for many of the community concerts, and it's not just African-Americans, it's all, it's diverse. So please consider that. That is definitely something that our community needs, and we do not need to lose that landmark, Paul Quinn AME Church.
Thank you, Mrs. Clemmons. Okay. Up next, we have Clady Johnson, and she wishes to speak in favor. Hello, Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor Harris.
Can you please state your name and location, and you have three minutes.
My name is Clady Johnson Haywood, and I'm a member of Paul Quinn AME Church, and I have been there ever since 1950, and so that makes it 75 years. And I'm one of the oldest members of the church. And it's my home church. And once you get to be with the Lord, it's hard to give him back. So we have not just been up one of the biggest churches, but we are one of the biggest churches here in Bastrop and one of the oldest ones and one of the first Black history churches. And we would like to see it, we'd like to get some help. We need help with restoring our church. It's a, it's just part of my life. And when I'm gone, I'd like to afford to be there when it takes me there, okay? So I'm not going to use all three of my minutes. Ismael.
Mayor Harris.
But anyway, I would appreciate the council to consider the help that we need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson Haywood. All right. Up next, we have Stephanie Hurd. She would like to speak. Hello, Ms. Stephanie. How are you?
Hello.
Can you?
Mayor Harris.
Yes, ma'am.
My address is 100 Hassler Street, Bastrop, Texas, and my name is Reverend Stephanie Hurd. And we moved to Bastrop in '71, and Paul Quinn members invited us to come to the church. And it was a safe haven for us. It was a good place because we moved from Kingsville, we were military, and we moved, and it was a safe haven for us. And so I'm in here to support a funding for the Bell Tower and for restoration of the church. Because again, although it's a building, we still are a community, and we're there for people. When storms come, whatever happened, as you heard, you know, for the homeless, we made sandwiches and, and we put love, offering good, whatever, we do, we do, we do not just for Paul Quinn, but for the community. It's a beautiful building. It's a historical building. It's a good building, and it's a great building. And since I moved there, we got there in '71, I'm just like Sister Johnson, I would still like to see it there when they roll my body in that building. It's a beautiful building, although I'm pastoring somewhere else, but it's my home church, and I still live here. I would ask that you all consider funding Paul Quinn AME Church. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Up next, we have Doc Jackson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Doc Jackson. I'm at 163 Tahitian Drive. I am here also to support the assistance in helping the Paul Quinn African Methodist Episcopal Church, in case you didn't know what the AME stood for, because it has been a longstanding church in this community. It's, it's within the South End or the Bastrop African-American Heritage District that we are proposing, that you'll be talking about later on, and so it's a significant part of that district, and I would really hate for us to declare the district and then have that building in such ill-repair. So I would hope that there would be some funding possibly available to help that church with, with the renovation process of that, or maybe finding some grants or assisting them in trying to get that together. I think it would be very much appreciated. A lot of my family have gone there. In fact, I have family members that have gone there for generations and are there, and I even went there as a child myself. I went between there and several other churches. So just would respectfully ask that you would try to find some funding and assistance for that church. Thank you.
Thank you, Doc.
One, one last thing, I'm sorry.
Oh, you got two minutes. Go ahead.
Oh, I still have a minute. This, another historical significance of that church is that there's a, the bell that, the bell that's in that tower was brought across the seas, and it's a significant contribution, and it's, it was carried there. It has a lot of history behind it. And the AME, our African Methodist Episcopal Church, its history is very deep in this community, and it's just worthy that that Bell Tower stay intact so that the bell that was carried across the river and brought into Bastrop can still be stored there and housed there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Up next, we have Reverend Edie Johnson that would like to speak as well. Good evening, sir. Can you please give us your name and location? And you'll have three minutes.
My name is Reverend Edie Johnson. I am the pastor of Paul Quinn AME Church. The address is 1108 Walnut Street here in Bastrop, Texas. To the mayor and the city council, I've already given you my name. I have the honor of serving as the pastor of Paul Quinn AME Church here here in Bastrop for over 17 years. Tonight, I stand before you to speak about preserving not just a building, but a piece of Bastrop living history, the Paul Quinn Bell Tower. Paul Quinn AME Church founded in the 1870s is recognized as the second oldest Baptist church in Bastrop. For nearly 150 years, this church has been a place of worship, a shelter during hard times, and a center for feeding the hungry and uplifting our youth. The bell tower itself is a symbol of endurance. In generations past, the bell called families to worship, marked community events, and served as a beacon of hope for formerly enslaved families building new lives here in Bastrop. The church was awarded a Texas Historical Marker in 2008, acknowledges its central role in the African American story of the city. But today, this heritage is at risk. The bell tower has missing siding, structure weakness, and urgent needs of repair. Without immediate action, we risk losing more than woods and nails. We risk losing a landmark that, that tells Bastrop's story of faith, endurance, and unity. The cost of restoring the bell tower is far less than the cost of losing a historical treasure. By investing in this project, Bastrop has the opportunity to protect its history while strengthening community pride and tourism. I respectfully ask that the city of Bastrop stand with us through financial assistance, partnership, or letters of support to ensure that the Paul Quinn Bell Tower is restored and preserved. I also request that the city manager explore and identify available funds to help support this project so that together we can move from vision to action. The request is not about religion or worship. It's about preserving a historical structure that belongs to Bastrop culture and community heritage. This is more than just a church project, it's a Bastrop project, a community project, a heritage project. If we serve this tower, we serve the stories that struggles and the hopes it represents for generations to come. Thank you for your time and your commitment to preserving Bastrop history. I got 16 seconds. All the people that have come to help support Bastrop, we usually kind of stand for, they can kind of see we are here. If you're here to help support. As you can see, it is a need. And we hope that you all will take this to the city manager and help her to have, find the funds to help preserve the bell tower. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Johnson. Okay, up next, we have Cecilia Serna. And she does wish to speak on this, you gonna do Agenda Item or Citizen Comments?
Agenda.
Okay, all right, well, we are through our Citizen Comments. Thank you, everyone, for the comments. We appreciate it. All right, on to Agenda Item 8, Consent Agenda. All items listed on the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted on, by one motion. And there will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. Council members, do we have anything that we would like to have removed?
8B. Bravo.
Okay, anything else? All right.
No.
Okay, we're good. All right, we just got, just got one. Yeah. All right. I'm about to, I'll just make sure we're good. All right, Agenda Item 8B, Consider and Act on the Second Reading of Ordinance Number 2025-66, Amending the Code of Ordinances Related to the Chapter 1.10 Title Parks, Article 1.10.002 Title Parks Rules, Amending the Content to Allow Use by All Individuals.
So, um, in the version of the document that is in the packet, it doesn't have the changes that we asked for at the last council meeting. Um, and so the motion that I made that was seconded, that's in the, in the meeting minutes even, that's in the Consent Agenda, um, adds, uh, the phrase "allowed by law" after "all individuals." So all individuals allowed by law, um, are allowed to use the space. And we didn't get that change in here. And so I wanted to bring that up again and ask what we should do about that.
We can table it to the 30th, or you can again state it and approve it with said changes.
And I'm fine with doing that as well, but I just, okay, fair enough. So, so, uh, motion to approve, um, Item 8B with the addition of the phrase "allowed by law" after "all individuals" in, uh, Section 2 Amendment on page 48 of the packet.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, 8B passes unanimous. All right, since we don't have any others, we're going to... Uh, yeah, um, 8A is Consider and Act on the Second Reading of Ordinance Number 2025-70, Establishing 2.195 Acres Located at 610 Martin Drive, Jr., Jr. Drive, Bastrop, Texas, as Designated Parkland.
So motion to approve Items 8A and then 8C through 8M on the Consent Agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in a quick second. I don't know, might need to go back to the clock on that one. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you, council members. All passes unanimous. All right. On to items for individual consideration. Agenda Item 9A, Conduct a Public Hearing. Consider and Act on the First Reading of Ordinance Number 2025-71, Adopting a Budget for Fiscal Year 2025 to 2026, October 1st, 2025 through September 30th, 2026, Attached as Exhibit A, Making Certain Appropriations and Providing That Expenditures For Said Fiscal Year Be Made in accordance with Said Budget, Providing a Distribution and Move to Include on the September 30th, 2025 Agenda for the Second Reading.
All right, Colin, do you have the other PowerPoint up?
Adam, City Manager.
No, the PowerPoint, the budget PowerPoint. It's in the Agenda folder. We have open gov ready in case you guys...
In case anybody wants to know what's going on.
We can drill down to the commas and the periods.
Yeah, there's the budget right there.
It is in the, uh, let me, let me teams it to you right quick. Sorry about that. It's in the Agenda Share 2025 folder. Uh, copy link, let me put in the link for you. Yes. All right, thank you, Mayor and Council and Bastrop residents. I'm sure we're all tired of talking about the budget. It feels like this has been an extraordinary long budget period because of the agenda posting error that happened. By now, we should have been, uh, done with this item. So, let's talk about where we are financially. The city stands in good, strong position. We have total revenues across all funds, including restricted and enterprise funds of $71,616,000. We have total expenditures of $68,231,000 with revenue over expenses of $3.384 million. And we have total all-ending fund balances of $61,434. Now, I get asked, how did that giant fund balance occur? Well, we were drawing down massive fund balances as we were building the wastewater treatment plant and the water treatment plant and, um, uh, making ends meet, so to speak. And so we're back to building some of those fund balances and we're gonna talk about that here in a second. So, that's a very hard number for you to see. I do have a budget at a glance for them on that, uh, the administration printer. So, um, the budget at a glance would show you that all of the funds are in positive, uh, condition. The general fund ends, uh, with a, uh, fund balance of $5383255. Um, and we are required to have $4652232. So we have, uh, excess fund balance of $731,000. Uh, general fund debt service ends up with $1.4 million. You heard her say development services is doing well. They end up with a fund balance over, uh, nearly $1.4 million. And that's not bad for a brand-new fund that we just started. Uh, engineering ends up at a net zero and that's because engineering is only funded as we have projects. We should not be profiting in the engineering field. Uh, street maintenance has an ending fund balance of over $2 million. And that is because we removed projects from operating. You should never put capital expenditures in your operating accounts and that is a habit that the city of Bastrop had. So now, as we have a project and I have an amount, I move that money over, we spend that money, and then we move on to the next project. So I'm not conflating apples and oranges. Um, we had some general fund one-time items that are still ongoing with both Mayfest and the museum. Uh, that's a projected $253,000. Some of that is going to end up being surplus and will end up, uh, being swept back into the general fund as the projects get done. Uh, the cemetery permanent fund has $550,000 that it will end up with. The designated fund, $696,000. Water wastewater, over $16 million. Wastewater debt service, $3.2 million. Water wastewater impact fees, $4.5 million. Bastrop Power and Light, $8.1 million. Vehicle equipment and replacement, $5.2 million. Transportation impact fees, that's also a new fee to build new roads, $1.5 million. The economic development corporation ends up with a fund balance over $10 million. The hotel occupancy fund ends up with a balance of $2.956 million and we are increasing fund balance by over $500,000 with the consolidation. Um, Parkland Trail dedication, um, has a starting position of minus 81. We have small revenues, that's a minus, uh, number. We'll get into that here in a second. Library Board ends up with $39,000. That's also just a very small, uh, amount. I'm not sure why that's moving off of the screen. Um, Hunter's Crossing ends up with $140,000. Uh, and then the grand total is that $63,649, uh, amount. I think I was moving that. Uh, the largest contributors to fund balance are Bastrop Power and Light. And I will say that all of these are, the top four are restricted funds, meaning they can only do what that fund is able to do. There's no magic in terms of, uh, transferring out unless you're BP&amp;L and we have a receipt for service. So BP&amp;L, $8.1 million. And that's reduced from your last workshop because as we were talking about the vehicle equipment and replacement fund not being solvent, this is such a healthy fund balance position that it seems ridiculous to put those vehicle purchases on payments when this fund balance was able to purchase it outright. Um, some tweaks that we made to the VERF made it solvent again. Uh, wastewater water impact fees, those are fees we collect from development and those, um, will also go toward paying some debt and improvements to the system. And that's debt service, that should be a net zero when we get done making the payments that we owe for debt. Uh, transportation impact fees, again, that's gonna be the amount that's gonna be used for new roads in and around town as we move through the development process. And the economic development, uh, corporation has a healthy fund balance over $10 million. And we're gonna talk about that, I'm sure, at length. So, um, let's talk about the workhorse because this is the one that everybody cares about because this is the one that affects the bottom line and the property tax rate. So, total revenue, $18.5. Total operating expenditures, $18.6. We did draw down that fund balance of $96,000, which left us with that fund balance of $731. Um, we still have 29% uh, percentage of fund balance to operational accounts. By ordinance, we're required to have 25%. So we have a little bit of wiggle room where the fund is, uh, still healthy. That normally gets put into one-time expenses. That's, that's your normal ask. This year's gonna be a little different because we're gonna talk about a stable tax rate. So, from a property tax overview, um, we had evaluations drop a little bit. We talked about that from 1665 to 1652. That should be, uh, felt in your appraisal results, residents. And if you don't, please, uh, come see me because I've, I've been told almost everybody I've spoken to has dropped, even if it's just a little bit. Our commercial folks weren't as, uh, lucky. And so let's talk about the tax rates. Um, we are required to do three calculations. And it is math of epic proportions that has, uh, no static number because it depends on who you're talking to. Our no new revenue rate is the rate that would bring in the same amount of revenue from the same properties, uh, last year and this year, so 24 and 25. That no new revenue rate would be .5179. The amount that it would take us, uh, that would require us to go to the voters is anything above .5262. We gotta get to the voters and say, this is the tax rate that we want. Are you okay with a tax increase? The de minimis rate is the amount that it would take us to earn an additional $500,000. And then, um, the staff alternative that I am putting out there for you is .5040. And that is the, the amount of money that would equal a zero impact to the residents on the tax rate, even with reduced valuations. And so as a comparison, last year's tax rate was $4994. But values last year were a little higher. Where's my house? There you go. So, um, in 2024, values were $307,000 on average. And you multiply that, well, you divide that by 100 and then you multiply that by 4994. And that gives you an average tax bill for the city of Bastrop of $1,534. Now, I know that is not y'all's tax bill because it comes with the county, it comes with emergency services, it comes with the school district, and your tax bill is greater than that. Bastrop's part, the city's part, is 1534. If we were to set the 2025 rate at .5179, then the tax bill goes from 1534 to 1576. And it ends up in an increase of $42 across to the residents. In 2025, um, the staff alternative on the $304,000 value at 5040 brings it back to the $1,534 and a, uh, zero increase to the residents. So I'll go back to what the tax rates have done. Um, you can see as we add value, the tax rates, uh, drop. And appraisals, as they go up, the tax rate should theoretically drop with it proportionately because there are some things that always go up. Insurance and those kinds of things that are what I call sunk cost, uh, in city operations. Again, just an example of the tax rate. Um, so I'm gonna go back to this slide also. So, the debt rate went down, uh, almost two cents from 1962 to, uh, 1762, actually a little more than two cents. Um, and that's, uh, that's due some, to some pretty careful planning. And then also, again, the new values that we put on the ground, that 1722 is for a $15 million borrow. It is not a $20 million borrow. And I know some of you are super excited, but it is not a $20 million borrow. And that leaves our maintenance and operation rate, um, from last year at 3032. If you go to the staff alternative, that is 3318. So, um, in 2025, the budget amount was, um, the sales tax amount, which is the other big component of the revenue for the general fund, was $9,050. And we are shy of projections, but really believe that this coming year, with everything, the Sprouts, the Longhorn, and everything that's coming online in Burleson East first, um, that we will meet our projections and have a slight increase of $200,000. that we will meet our projections and have a slight increase of $200,000. I also have a super beef about appraisals, but you all know how I feel about that. So priorities. We continue to talk about street maintenance and rehabilitation. In prior years, the general fund made a transfer to streets. We're not doing that this year. Instead, the general fund has taken on the debt in the street maintenance that we took on to get started prior to the tax receipts coming in. There's that borrow. There are no additional staff for public safety this year, and the VERF had some tweaks to it to get it positive, and really a separation of what is an operating expense and what is a capital expense. And then we talked about the Discover Bastrop resulting in a no need to draw down from fund balance. So the general fund did increase, and that is despite no increase to the staff and the police budget, this amount increased to 340, by 346,000. That is salaries, that is hiring bonuses, that is training, some of that is our health insurance. We did not put a cost-of-living increase for employees this year, but we did include their 2.5% step that every employee receives at their anniversary date, unless barring some employee issue or some disciplinary action. And that's 353,000 to the general fund. I did remove all VERF payments, except those required lease payments. And we're going to pick up the VERF again. The VERF, again, is in healthy condition. It, you know, as with everything else, if you have it, you're going to spend it. And I have, who shall remain nameless, some employees who believe that the car is five years old, it's time for a new car. So they've been told they're going to drive it till the wheels fall off, right, staff? And our fleet and facilities manager is shaking his head vigorously up and down, so. And so it does include a new mechanic, however, because we have to keep our fleet up and running. And that new mechanic will need to be outfitted. So we will talk about that throughout the budget year. It adds one accountant in finance, one HR generalist, because our HR manager, our HR director is at retirement-eligible, and so we need to begin a succession plan, and then a half-time library associate. I will say that at the .5040, those hires will occur in the third quarter. So we'll start interviewing in the second quarter of the year and move into hiring in the third quarter. Unless the funds look even healthier and we have other vacancies, for example, in the general fund, which is normally always the case, then we can work on tweaking when those hires occur. And the largest hit to not just the general fund, but to all of the funds, was an increase in health benefit costs of over $686,000. This year, we've had some pretty ill employees. I expect next year, we will have a requisite increase in healthcare costs. And as insurance goes, we will begin to have penalties for staff who don't take their medication. That's just the way insurance is going, because it decreases the risk, not just to the city but to the pool. So there's a real big focus on wellness and keeping yourself healthy, making sure you're taking your medication, making sure you're diabetes or high blood pressure, and those top medications are in check. We are talking about surcharges for smoking, et cetera, so. So if you're a smoker, get off. This next category of funds, so we're going to go over three main categories. The general fund, obviously, which is what I like to tell people, is those funds that the private sector doesn't want to take over. I have the private sector knocking at the door for Bastrop Power and Light to take over the electric company. I don't have anybody knocking down the door to take over the library, that just, because the library and the ones in the general fund don't ever make any money. The special revenue funds, they do make money. They do make their own money, but because it is a special revenue, it's allocated to that fund specifically. And so, for example, general fund debt, it can only be used for debt. Engineering can only be used for engineering. Street maintenance, only for street maintenance, and you get the idea on the rest of that. So let's talk about the first fund in this group, and that's Engineering Services. Again, that's a net zero, and this is a pretty significant change from what the city was doing in prior years past. The staff in the engineering, as they are allocated to a project, they will be charged to a project, and as projects wind down, the staff may need to wind down. And it is an elastic function of how we do business for this particular fund. The next fund is Street Maintenance. And we have 3.549 from sales tax that's been allocated, and we had over 3 million from prior bond funds that are also going to be included in this fund for projects. No additional staff proposed. I am on the hunt for a Streets Director. That is a, that's a pretty big ask, and in the meantime, we're doing a complete assessment of this department on whether or not the private sector can do it more efficiently and more quickly. It has a revenue of 3.5. We have expenses of 2.3 with ending fund balance of 2 million. Now, we have been meeting with asphalt paving contractors. We are putting an IDIQ indefinite delivery indefinite quantity out. We know asphalt runs about $1 million a mile. And so, for example, the south end is an entire three miles. And so we know that asphalt and sidewalks in that area would cost a $3 million improvement, but we also know we're taking in $3.5 million in sales tax. So if you can imagine that quadrant, and you take that in the city, we can redo the entire city probably every six to seven years in terms of the city core. And so I need to weigh that on whether or not that is the appropriate path for us to The next is the Cemetery Operating Fund. Because we do own the cemetery, it needs perpetual care. This is also some money that is, this is not the Cemetery Permanent Fund, this is the operating fund. And this is the columbarium. And if you've not been out to the cemetery to see the columbarium, it should be complete by the end of this month. It is a pretty spectacular piece, and you can see it in the budget book. The columbarium and the niche, they're called niches. They look like post office little slots. They are for cremated remains, and then there's an entire new section that's been added. So this loan to the Cemetery Operating Fund will be paid back to the general fund as they begin to sell the niches. We have Designated Funds that also ends up in positive status. Wastewater and water impact fees, again, there's no staffing in this one. We did increase the wastewater fees to their maximum amount, and then we will review water again in the spring to see if we're going to touch that impact fee amount. The Hotel Occupancy Fund had the most changes. So it absorbed two staff from the former Vis a Bastrop organization. It added two positions, a cultural arts coordinator, a special events coordinator. And then there are, there is a new position, a special events worker that supports the convention center. And these staff were offset by eliminating two high-level positions, the Vis a Bastrop Executive Director and the Convention Center Director. We now have a Convention Center Manager. And then those salary adjustments were made, and we had a net increase in capacity without an overall in-personal cost. This is the VERF. Again, we made some changes so that the revenues exceed the expenses, where when we spoke last, it was expenses exceeding revenues. There is some transfers in from the general fund, and those are to pay for the police lease payments. If you recall, we talked about during the COVID period that the police had no choice but to enter into leases. They were horrible leases, though, but, you know, we're going to live through that, and that was before Sylvia, so. Street Maintenance Fund pays $216,000 into this. If we go through the process of deciding that we're going to privatize the street department and outsource that, then this fund will be, these funds will be delivered back into the Street Maintenance Fund. Development Services has a small contribution of 50,000. They have a few vehicles that the inspectors use to get around. So tonight, in the packet, I'm going to ask you to form an investment committee that's already listed in the investment policy. And that's because I think we need to do better with our money. There are some things that we can do that can put that money to work, where some of that interest earned from that money would be able to pay some of the shortfall or some of the needs and some of the department, and some of the department needs. Debt Service, we're bringing in enough to pay the debt, which is what you're supposed to do when we set the tax rate. And I'm talking to the tax assessor-collector, we need to give her an estimate of our debt, so we do a whole debt schedule. Here we go. We have enough money to pay what we have borrowed. But any increases to debt among any of the funds, when you do it without strategically planning for it, will end up in either fee increases or a tax rate increase, which is why this year, some of that residual balance in the general fund tax rate will be used to pay off 2006, 2007. We're having a conversation with our financial advisor to see which is, which are the best things to pay off, because next year, when a full payment of that $15 million comes due, we want to make sure that we have a sustained tax rate. So Enterprise Funds, again, these are the funds, it's called an enterprise fund because they're like small businesses, and that's Development Services, Water Wastewater, Bastrop Power and Light. They're a government coffs center intended to be self-supporting and provide support to the general fund, and all of them do, all of them make an administrative support to the general fund. When that support gets to be heavier, we go back and revisit and ask for a greater contribution from each one of these funds. I will tell you, Development Services, and God love you, Doc Cowie, Development Services is an inordinate amount of support from all of the other departments, and their contribution is minimal. So we're going to continue to help support Development Services, because it is the economic engine, but at the same time, it may have to provide requisite support to the general He ends the year with a healthy fund balance of 1.393. We are reviewing the addition of a development coordinator and some realignment of staff, and that's simply because I have a director who's also the building official. All great, wonderful, Doc does a wonderful job, but he is only one person. And Doc is retirement-eligible, so I don't want Doc to get up one day and say, I'm burned out, see you later. And you notice how he's giving you his back. He is not even wanting to make eye contact with me at this particular moment.
That Doc right there.
Yeah, yes, Doc Cowie, not Doc Jackson, Doc Cowie. The Water Wastewater also ends with a very healthy fund balance. They are getting a new plant operator and a new maintenance technician, but again, no rate changes are proposed. Some of this is just significant, too, some minor tweaks we made to the ordinance on how we were charging apartments, and, you know, for the most part, apartments, we're almost getting a free skate for a little while. So we fixed that, and you can see this fund becomes healthier when you, when you do what you're supposed to do and charge what you're supposed to be charging. Bastrop Power and Light, no additional staff and no monthly rate increases, and again, it has a healthy fund balance. So the 2526 has a proposed certificate of obligation debt, and that's going to include funding for the Old Iron Bridge. It has this quality-of-life improvements for the parks requirement, if we're going to do Mayfest, and anything else that requires park master plan amendments, which are committees, public hearings, planning and zoning, city council. And so this is, this is going to change a little bit as the projects get to finalization. We planned, out of the $15 million bond sale, we planned $9.6 million for the Old Iron Bridge rehabilitation. We planned $370,000 for Fisherman's Park, Fireman's Park, I'm sorry, which is a new playground, some bleacher covers, and a restroom. And a portion of that restroom will be paid for via a grant. Mayfest Park improvements are $248,000. Delgado Park estimated at $1.83 million, and that is our ADA accessible playground. That is a new splash pad, and also a new restroom. Fisherman's Park improvement, $675,000, and that is improving the splash pad that exists to put in recirculation and just give that entire area a facelift. As I've said before, one of the things that breaks my heart the most is that splash pad, while it's a wonderful addition to the park, does not recirculate water. And in the summer months, we waste over a million gallons a month that does not get recirculated into that area. Goes right down the drain. There was a point in time where we were trying to purchase the Pine Street House. That is now off of the table. We have not been able to reach a, an agreement on the Pine Street House. The shade structures at the Little League is $75,000. That may be upped a bit as we begin to take into account where some of those structures are needed the most. And this is also going to be a community build. In order for us to put up 10 shade structures at the Little League Park, it will require all hands on deck. We have $500,000 put aside for a veterans memorial. We have $550,000 put aside for a par-three golf course on the 15 acres that is behind, sorry, I just lost my, that is behind the convention center. Let me get to my slide very quick. Part of that, 550,000 is, 50,000 is also a feasibility study, very much like we're doing with Mayfest Park. $50,000 for the Bark Park, $50,000 for Kerr Park, and then $500,000 for the reconstruction of the German Casino, which I'm sure we're going to have some conversation about that. And then Ferry Park, some minor improvements to the park of $25,000, and that equals a grand total of $15 million. Some of the pictures, that is the park amenity at Fireman's Park. Again, it pays homage to the firemen who used to play there. It also has a very large cover over that playscape, so it's not going to be exposed to the elements, even though it's in a very nice shady area in central Texas and anywhere in Texas, quite honestly. It's very hot to be outside without a cover. We move to Mayfest Park. That has not a stitch of shade today, so it's going to get a playground, it's going to get some swings, and it gets a covered pavilion. This is Delgado Park, which is, again, the all-ability park that ends up with a splash pad, the all-ability park, and an additional restroom. And if funds are available, I've had requests for a trail around the park so that folks can still walk around that park. And then the Fisherman's Park, the splash pad restoration, comes with some pretty neat canopies, it comes with a recirculation. There is some relocation of some of those crepe myrtles that are going to be required, and this is going to be really geared toward younger children, and it has amenities like the toad and that butterfly that act as splash sprinklers. And then the LCR, the Little League Park, those are the shade structures and the bleachers that LCR, Little League, or the youth league will see improvements at. Looking forward, we know that wastewater treatment plant, that should say wastewater treatment plant number four. Planning and construction, that is approximately a $60 million endeavor, 60 to 72 million, but we're honing in on the $60 million number. But again, that is a partnership between the city and CorEx. And all fingers, toes, and prayers sent up, the Water Development Board also to help with that fund. And then we know that there is a water service expansion that's going to be needed. We need an elevated water tank, and we need some water distribution lines in order to keep our fire flows and our fire protection, and that is approximately 15 to 20 million. And we are working with a residential developer to incorporate that. We have the right-of-way that we need, we have the land that we need, and since this particular development is a planned unit development, that we'll also have alternative funding mechanisms, how we can partner to get that paid for. So the proposed rate, just some housekeeping, the proposed rate doesn't have to be the final adopted rate. We had to publish .5179, that's the no-new-revenue rate. That is the amount the budget is built on. I gave you information in the staff report that I'm going to bring up here. Sales tax is a conservative 2.2% increase. Again, no fee changes proposed, and the general fund has a healthy fund balance, a reserve over the required reserve. and the general fund has a healthy fund balance reserve over the required reserve of $731,000. So we have to adopt the budget by next week. Any questions? I see the lights lighting up already.
Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. Sylvia, are we still thinking maybe on the mobility challenged equipment going to one of the, maybe whatever park you?
Correct. And that mobility equipment is minimal cost. I mean, it's about 18 to $2,000 a piece.
Great.
So I'm gearing it for Fireman's Park to start because the senior housing is right across the street and then we'll just expand. And that is such a small amount that even if we don't pay for it with bond funds, it can fit into the operating fund.
And the great thing is the 500,000 from the Pine Street House is, so that's great. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Meyer. Anyone else? Councilmember Fosserler?
What's the current plan for the German Casino rebuild? Is if it's not, what's, what's the latest with that?
So that also, we're going through a review with Architectural Services on what is appropriate for the space. The German Casino was originally only 1,800 square feet, but if we're going to place it on the site of the convention center, we're looking at a potential expansion of that 1,800 with the front of it still looking like the German Casino, but we all know the convention center is in dire need of a kitchen. And then the convention center also runs short of meeting rooms. As you're planning a larger event, it's often nice to have a breakaway room or have a smaller room where you can do some of that strategic planning. So the hope is that we end up with a structure, you know, probably 8,000 square feet that can have dual purposes of community use from, you know, baby showers, blank, 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 all of the other additional, but also have an added resource to the convention center.
No one else? All right. Thank you, Madam City Manager. I am going to open up the public hearing. And so we have Reverend E.D. Johnson, who has signed up to speak during this portion. So please, sir, come up. I believe you've given us all something for this portion?
Yes, I did.
Okay. So just like before with citizen comments, just run us through who you are and where you're at. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Reverend E.D. Johnson. Again, I'm the pastor of the Paul Quinn Amy Church. Mayor, council members, thank you again for allowing me to speak. I return to the podium, not to repeat myself, but to emphasize why this request is urgent and why immediate action is needed. The restoration of the Paul Quinn bell tower can be completed for approximately 75K or less. Professional assessments and competitive bids, this not just an expense, it's an investment in Bastrop heritage and culture, tourism and community pride. Every season of delay brings greater risk of collapse, higher repair costs. Acting now projects both our history and our resources. Waiting will only cost the city more. I respectfully ask that the city of Bastrop allocate funds immediately for the restoration of the Paul Quinn bell tower. I further request that the city manager identify and release available funds so that this work can begin work without delay. This is, this request is not about religion, worship or church operations. It's about the structure. The bell tower itself, which is recognized historical landmark in Bastrop, support for this project does not cross the line between church and state because the city's role is to preserve heritage, culture and community history, not to fund religious activity. Many cities lawfully fund repairs of historical churches when the purpose is preservation of the building and its role in the community identified. This is our opportunity to demonstrate leadership, to move from words to actions. By investing in this project now, we preserve a 150-year-old symbol of endurance, faith and unity for future generations. Thank you for your leadership and your commitment to preserving Bastrop history. Do I get to ask y'all, have any questions?
Councilmember Fosserler?
Thank you, Reverend Johnson, for coming up again and for giving us the three bids. I'm curious, just because I'm reading through the bids pretty quickly, are they, do they cover the same scope of work? Do each one of them have the same scope of work?
Yes, ma'am. They all cover the same bell tower, just the bell tower by itself, not the whole church, just the bell tower.
And do you have, have you, y'all reviewed these? Have your leadership reviewed these? And do you have a preference? I'm just, just, just wondering.
Well, I've looked at all three bids and I would, I'm more comfortable with the middle one. I think it's about $46,000. There's one for 72, there's one for 46 and there's one for $26,000. And one for 46,000 is willing to work with the city of Bastrop. And if there's any extra additional, they're willing to eat that difference. So we'll stay locked in at 46.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
I don't think we got to one for 46.
Oh, yeah.
Is the first one? Am I overlooking it?
Okay, so 61?
61, 26 and 72.
Okay. The middle one then.
Okay.
Forgive me for my, I wasn't looking at my notes, just for memory. Getting a little bit older now.
Okay. Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you. Yes, a question, just because you brought it up and I was, I thought it was wonderful that in 2008, you have a historical marker.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there ways to get special grants because of that also to help?
Yes, I have contacted the city of Historical Commission. We have also applied for grants. The problem is, is that most of the grants are not going to come alive into January. If you have an opportunity to go right down the street, you look at the bell tower. If a good wind comes or someone really leans against that bell tower, it will come down. There is a power line that is stationary to the bell tower. If that comes down, then the city power will go out as well because it's on the grid. I think it's on the grid. But to stabilize that until the grants are coming in, then we can at least focus on it not tumbling down.
And do you have an idea of just how much the guessing, the, the grants could yield that have been applied for?
Yes, ma'am. The bid that we have right now, the, the grant that I'm supposed to be getting with God's help is for 96,000.
Okay.
And that's on a reimbursement term. We, we, we paid and we sent the invoices to them and then they reimburse us back.
Gotcha. So my, now my question's going to be to our city manager. Sylvia, so considering that and in, if the grants come in for that, is there a way to structure something with the city to fund contingent or some way to make that work together?
So when Reverend Johnson and I spoke, he knows grants have stipulations and it's hard to advance funds because then they have funds they didn't report to the grant. So it's hard to do that. That almost disqualifies them from a grant unless the grant was written with a match, so to speak. And so the opportunity to fund, and I spoke to Reverend Johnson at length, they missed the initial hot application, which they weren't aware of. I get that. And so our timeframe is either here, which is why he's here, or once the roots board is seated, the board would then take it under advisement and that's probably also January. So the, there's opportunity perhaps for the fund, the hot fund to fund it and it fits under historic and we have not exceeded our limit under historic.
Right. And that, that would have been my next question too, was under the hot funds, under that category, for it to apply for that special category because I appreciate all of you being here so much and I, I absolutely acknowledge the need because that is, whereas always talking about authentic Bastrop.
Right.
We couldn't get more authentic than that. So I would love to find a way to help and make this happen. Possibly the hot funds. We haven't finalized the budget till next Tuesday or we can have discussion or I don't, since I'm just seeing this tonight, I would like to have discussion on it. If anyone else has another idea, I would love to hear that.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
So I have reservations.
Okay.
And my reservations are not in the importance of the project. In fact, when you do your fundraiser, talk to me, I'll give you a donation. It is important. I really do not like the idea of anyone coming to us at the last possible moment on the day the budget is being passed and asking for an additional piece of money to be allocated to them. It's unfair to the people that didn't come and do it and it sets a precedent that this is the way that, that people should come to our council to ask for funds outside of the normal process. I really don't like that. How would you respond? Like, how am I, how do I respond to that?
That's a good question and I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah.
Since Bast, since Paul Quinn is the second oldest black church in Bastrop, has been there for 150 years. It's not like that we have not tried to get in. Every time I got to the door, it was closed on me with the hot funds. They said, get it into the city manager. They were walking in. Then Taran said it was too late. Turn around and said, give us three bids. We tried to walk it through and it said, that's too much. We've tried everything to do feasibly to get to the city of Bastrop, but it's been closed door and this was my only opportunity. What I would say to anyone is that this is a part of Bastrop. It's not just a church. It's part of Bastrop's history. It has 150 years standing. I would hate to see that go down the waste. This is not, just, hey, just by accident, let me just go run. I'm looking at, if you walk by the street, just walk by there, just look at, you can see the inside of the church inside the bell tower. That is going to cause a tremendous amount of problems if it happened to be a cold wind come through here, rain, anything else, that would come down and that would be tragic. Everything has a cause and an effect. And if we sit there and say, well, it's not fair to everybody else, this is not an everyday affair. This is something really needed and is really important. There's a lot of people who have come to Paul Quinn for different things. We've continued to feed 150 people on the streets. We find ways to give clothing out. We find a way to help the community. We open the doors to the, to the community when they ask, can we use your facility? On December, we have a recital for young children to come and play. They have already invested already to come in December 7th to be a part of that. They come every year. We try to find ways to help the community. When there is a strategic thing that happens as, I mean, God forbid, something happens, we open up our doors so that the homeless or somebody can have shelter. What I'm saying to you is that if the city of Bastrop will meet us and become a partner with this, when something happens, we're going to open our doors up because we can't forgive them where we come from and the help that we need. I'm asking, I'm pleading, I'm standing here not because I feel privileged, I feel like this is a need. I'm a servant. This is not my church that I built, but I've been passionate for 17 and I've seen what Bastrop have done. I've seen what Paul Quinn have done. And I'm pleading with each and every one of you all to look and say, you know what, this is an exception to the rules. And to your question, this is an exception. This is not a fly by night. This is something that says, hey, this is our community. This is something that we stand. How do we do it? Tourism, when we have Martin Luther King, one of the first places they come by is Paul Quinn. When we do the June 19th, that's the first place they come is to Paul Quinn. We are recognized. You can't go nowhere here in Bastrop and I say, do you know where Paul Quinn is? When the first time I came to Paul Quinn, I didn't know where it was at. I asked a stranger and they pointed me straight to Paul Quinn. So it has history. It has some, some stamina and I would hate for it to go down the waste. And because it's a historical landmark, I would have loved if it wasn't a historical landmark because I would have taken the belt out of the tower, put it on the ground and closed it in. But because it's historical and it was the way it came in, I have to leave it just the way it was rebuilt. And all those bids are saying, we're going to put it back to where it was to the best of the ability. And I'm going to work, if you all don't fund it, please put me in the right direction. I would beg and plead and, 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 and do whatever I need to do within the law. And with God's help, to get it done.
Mayor Pro Tim, I, I want to, I want to address a couple of things.
Okay.
First, Reverend Johnson and I met and I put him through the wringer, did I not?
Yes, you did.
I said, why'd you let it get so bad? Why'd you wait now? What have you been doing? You missed the hot fund application. Why? You had to get three bids. I can't just give you money. Right? So I asked all of those questions. The reality of it is, they had a very drastic contraction of their congregation after COVID that is just now sort of getting back. And so five years for Paul Quinn could, may as well be 15 because of the revenue that they bring in. The bids, you know, 70 some seems a little bit high, but I, I promise you, the 20 some ain't going to get the job done. I don't, I don't care how many of my people you have trying to fix that. It's not going to happen or they'll do it without permits or they'll do it without, you know, whatever. But I, I did put him through the wringer. I was satisfied with the responses that he gave me. I too don't like that it's at the 11th hour, but I'm a little bit better in a place that we do have an opportunity to fund it. Now, that's my position. The council is free to do whatever. And I think we're at a, we're at a place that he understands that we need a partnership from them. He understands that they need to be a place where we can be a shelter of last resort.
Yes.
Maybe a food distribution center. They may be a literacy center. And he is responsive to all of that. So.
Do we have, you know, I'm not deeply familiar with our building and development staff. Do we have like a structural engineer, not an engineer, but an inspector?
We have, yes, in our IDIQ, we have structural engineers and then we also have inspectors.
What I was wondering, some of this urgency has to do with the possibility of collapse, right? If we can take collapse off the table because the structure isn't going to collapse, for instance, you know, and I can't assess that, sitting here looking at pictures, and I have seen the outside of the church, I know exactly what you're talking about. But assessing if it is, and I hate to use the word cosmetic because it sounds inappropriate, but if it, yeah, if it's, is the structure compromised or is it replacing and putting boards up in, in their replacements and then painting it? Like, that's kind of the nature of...
So I appreciate the question. I'm going to, I think I told Councilmember Fosserler last time, you can't use public funds on private property. So you can do it, but we'd have to go through the code enforcement process. We'd have to issue a notice of an unstable structure and go through that process in order for us to sort of ignite what is the public process. Otherwise, I'm spending public funds to go fix a private.
Well, I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't suggesting fix it. I was suggesting.
Well, no, but to structurally assess it.
Advise the council on the urgency. So for instance, if you're talking about timing now versus January and the structure itself was still solid, you know, that would help discuss the urgency.
Well, I spoke to two of the bidders and two of the bidders feel like, yeah, it's in, it's in pretty rough repair. I even, to his suggestion, take it down and build an encasement, but that ruins the historic integrity of the church.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yeah. So here's my thought, because Sylvia, you just said exactly what I was thinking. Because we have community partners. We have a lot of community partners that do a lot of really, that's how we provide things for our people. I would think it'd be a great idea for y'all to be a community partner with the city.
Amen.
And we give those community partners as, as what they've asked and that's what's happened, right, with our hot funds. Now, here's the thing. We don't adopt the budget till next Tuesday. And I know this is the last minute, but we don't adopt the budget till next Tuesday. So it's, it's not, in my eyes, it's not too late. We have the funds. I would like to have an agreement with y'all.
Yes.
To be partners.
Absolutely.
To be, because that way, as we do with our other partners, we would be able to have the opportunity to help in that manner. Sylvia, does that?
So we talked about that. We talked about the possibility for the church going to get a loan and there, that's not something they want to do because we can't guarantee it. Although, although if it is similar to what we did with the Opera House where... Although, although, if it is similar to what we did with the Opera House, where we guarantee a certain amount over a certain period of years, then, then that really puts it in a two-way street. They are a partner, they're committed, they go and get the funds at a local bank, and then we're a partner with an annual payment to a, to a repair of some sort.
Right, right. So, I am absolutely interested in being in a partnership with y'all for-
And we would love to.
-for this to happen. And I just want it to work for the city and all the people, but I want it to work for the history too, because it's, it's important. So, I, I really am all about finding a way to make this happen, and I think that, to me, I don't know how y'all feel, but to me, that is the most logical way for this to happen.
And that takes the, the draw of the hot funds from a less significant amount to a more manageable annual amount.
Councilmember Pluckett.
Seems like we've had a, a good discussion on this, and so Stan, I just wanted to ask you, see any, what kind of legal issues do you see with any of this, and keep us on the straight and narrow.
Sure, thank you for the question. As the city manager described it on those facts, I don't see any problem with that type of, as long as there's an agreement in place with conditions and the normal protections for the public funds, and there's a finding that it's in the public interest, and citing the compelling historical significance from the witnesses in the recitals to the agreement, I don't see any problem there.
Spoken like a true attorney. Love you, Stan.
Councilmember Pluckett, you have anything, is your light still on? Okay.
All right, I just, I know all too well the history of Paul Quinn. I remember when the church itself needed to be remodeled, and they remodeled the church, and did a little bit to the bell tower, but from my recollection, it wasn't things done to it like it needed to be done, and thus we are in this position that we're in. You know, I, over the years of looking at it, I always wondered, you know, just why? Why not the AME, you know, group, you know, come together to help out the church? It's just kind of always baffled me. But I do know and understand the importance of Paul Quinn itself. Like I said, it has a lot of significance to a lot of people here in Barstrop, and it does hold a strong history for the South End itself. To Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland's point, it, we don't want to set the precedent where people, you know, have an emergency, for whatever reasons, and they come in and they're like, "Hey, we need this money," right? Because any, like, the way I look at it is, anyone can come up with a reason as why it's an emergency, and then we have to find ourselves in a position to make a decision. That's not saying that all decisions that we will make in that regard are not liable to happen or whatnot, but it just, it kind of puts us in a bind, and it, it allows everyone, anyone to just say that. I would also like to say, Reverend Johnson and anyone else, y'all don't have to come up here begging, you know? I don't, I don't, you know, I get your, your sense of urgency and your wanting to, but, you know, I, I also don't, you know, I just don't, I don't want to have to, you know, hear you say that, right? It's unfortunate, I'm not sure why, you were turned away or weren't able to make things happen in the past, that's not the direction we would like to go. We want to help out all of our community members, and especially those who, who are holding on to the history of Barstrop, right? Because it's very important, that's what makes us who we are. And so, I think that council, you know, we, we have some things to go over and look at. As Councilmember Meyer said, that, you know, we do have a week before it's finalized. We've been presented with several different options of things that the council members could look at. But, you know, to go with the community partnership, that is, that is real big, it's big for me. You know, if, if we as a city are going to be helping people out, we definitely want to have y'all involved in helping out with what we're going to be doing with the city and the citizens. And, you know, I'm not sure what that exactly looks like for Paul Quinn. I understand that y'all are trying to grow your membership, but, you know, I would love to see that church go back to the historic days where the, the doors were filled with people every Sunday, and there was activities, and like Mrs. Clemens said, they had VBS there, right? So, I would love to see those things. Again, Paul Quinn means a lot to a lot of people, including myself. But, you know, there, you know, there is a procedure that we have to, to go through and, and take into consideration, and that's not closing the door, but these are just things that, that are, that's the reality of it. And so, you know, we have a council who cares about Barstrop, cares about the people, cares about the history, and I'm sure we're all going to, we're going to make the right decision. So, I do thank you for coming up here. Thank you, members of Paul Quinn and friends, for coming here and showing support. It shows that that church still has a lot of love left in it and on the outside of it. And so, thank y'all for coming and presenting us with that. Councilmember Lowe.
Yeah, I want to echo that sentiment. I was married at Paul Quinn, so I, so I've been reserving my kind of comments. But yeah, definitely anything, the community partnerships, because even with development, we want to have that partnership. So, anything we can do in that regard, we're all for. And also too, that a district is going to be formed around that. So, as we go through that, we can later and talk about that later-
Absolutely.
-as well. So, as Councilmember Meyer said, you know, whatever we can do within reason, we're willing to do.
So, Councilmember Lowe to that end, and Reverend Johnson. So, if we came up with a solution similar to the Opera House, that means you have to go get the loan, you have to go get the loan, and then that's what the Opera House did, and then we guarantee the loan over a period of years.
Okay.
With this amount, it's probably a five-year, so we make payments over a period of five years to help you pay off that loan for the loan amount of. So, in this, in this imagination place, because they haven't made a decision, and this is just me talking, I could very easily see $100,000 and we do five $20,000 tranches. That doesn't have a ginormous impact to the hot fund.
Councilmember Fosler.
I'm curious about timing, if we're able to do this fairly quickly. About your, your church leadership, like, who are the signers? Is there one decision-maker, or do you have a board? Like, we would probably need to get these documents together really quickly on our end, so do you have a group of people that you gather together to make decisions?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The district.
The district.
Is it the AME district, or does Paul Quinn have a-
Paul Quinn has a board of its own, and then if we needed to get, go to the tent, I'm very in good communication with the bishop, so whatever it takes. But for this matter alone, it would be within the Paul Quinn family.
Okay.
Church.
And so, Councilmember Fosler, to your point, the documents don't need to be polished, finalized, done. I think what Reverend Johnson was looking for was commitment, and so, if that's written into the budget, then we can work on the 380 agreements to have them finalized by the October 23rd meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Meyer.
So Sylvia, that being said, do you need a motion, a direction from us to move forward with this at all?
You've got a lot of talking left to do when it comes to the budget.
I didn't know if you needed a direction from us.
But yes, yes, at some point, you're going to have to call a vote and all that other good stuff.
Okay, I just want to make sure that you had everything you need.
She's ready, she's got her button. Yes, ma'am.
I'm ready.
Yes, ma'am. As it, as it relates to making a recommendation in the budget, it would sound something like adopting the budget, but making an amendment to the hot fund in the amount of blank.
Thank you, Reverend Johnson.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Wait, there's nobody else?
Sorry. Sorry, I moved a little too fast. All right. Help me out now here, where are we at? Sorry.
9A, was there any other, any other comments?
That's why, that's why I was closing it.
No other comments?
No other comments, so Sylvia's for 9H.
I be thinking I'm on point, and y'all give me, and I'm like, "What is going on?" And I knew I was moving in the right direction, y'all, I work hard at this.
Mayor, 9H has been pulled.
Yes, I know, I was going to, when we get to 9H, I was going to inform her that we had pulled it, we just got to get to it. We got this public hearing, we got one more for 9B, and then we'll be able to move through the rest of the consent agenda items, and when we get to 9H, I'll do that, so.
Got it, my bad, I'm sorry, I saw a whole stack of papers.
Yeah, no, no, no worries.
I thought all these folks were going to talk about the budget and tax rate with me.
If you'd have saw me up here, I've been, I've been situating and getting all my stuff in order, right? To make sure that I'm on point. So, I am going to close the public hearing for agenda item 9A. Okay, councilmembers?
So, at this point, I'm going to make a motion, and then we can discuss it from there as needed. So, I'm going to motion that we adopt the recommendations provided by staff, which includes a .5040 property tax, which is lower than the no new revenue rate, and then also approve a one-time salary adjustment to staff in the amount of $500 for full-time employees and $250 for part-time employees. And then, third, approve an amendment to the hot funds for the AME church for $100,000 over five years, as you suggested.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we need, we got, oh, he's got to have discussion now. Yes. Council, Mayor Pro Tem, you still have your light on.
So, I'll turn my light off.
Okay. Councilmember Fosler.
Thank you. I have a clarification on the, can we go over, because the par three golf course is part of the budget, and we've gotten a few letters, individual letters through our email.
Colin, can you pull up the budget item?
Can we talk about the fees, what's being done and what's being planned, just like we did with Mayfest and that, because we haven't talked about that part very much.
Yes.
Thank you.
Need Colin to pull up. Go back to... Makes you dizzy, sorry. Colin, can you zoom in to where it says Veterans Memorial and Par Three Golf Course? Thank you. So, Par Three has $550,000 allocated as part of the $15 million borrow. So, first, I want to correct a couple of things. Number one, the $15 million borrow is equal to the 1722 tax rate. The first interest payment is included in that 1722 tax rate. So, anything that we take off of here will reduce that rate. Number two, that 50,000 portion of that golf course is for a feasibility study. It is for, is this the appropriate place, how much is it going to end up costing, you know? And if that opinion of probable cost comes out to $15 million, obviously, the council's going to have to revisit that. That is the exact same thing we're doing with Mayfest Park, that's the feasibility report that you'll get in a few weeks. Same sort of process, we've got to get a professional. We have folks who are experts in the field locally, but I still need, and you're still going to want, a landscape architect and an engineer who says, "Yes, this can go here, and no, it won't be underwater," or, you know, whatever, X, Y, Z.
My, for the feasibility, so the feasibility study is already in motion, right?
No, not yet, it's going to be paid out of this.
Okay. As part of the feasibility, the concerns I hear are more about like water usage, like, will that cover, like, what does it take to maintain it? What will it take to operate it? What will it take to water it? All that? Okay.
Yes.
Awesome, I want us to look at all of that. Thank you.
Be a lot less than the splash pad during the summer.
Thanks, I'm done.
Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you, and, and on that note also, I just, I want everyone to understand that these numbers, we are not counting, I mean, we've got grants that have been applied for, Gilbert Cervantes is blowing and going with the grant applications, and all the numbers that you hear, the 750 from Texas Parks and Wildlife and all this, that, we're not factoring in that we're counting on these grants to pay, that's not what's factored in. So, please, I don't want anybody to think, you know, if you hear the chatter of, "Well, how would you count on a grant if you hadn't even gotten it yet to plan it?" That's not what we're doing. So, I just want that to be very clear. This, this is what, we're dealing with real numbers, and this is what they are.
And so, to that point, Councilmember Meyer, I want to be really clear that, number one, the bond borrow hasn't happened. I would have had come to you with a reimbursement resolution to pay for it out of general fund, and then reimburse ourselves out of, you know, X, Y, Z. The, the borrow is actually for Park and Quality Alive. So, if the Par Three Golf Course is not a viable option, that 500,000 will be programmed back into Parks and Quality Alive, trails, et cetera, et cetera. So, it's not, it's not something that's just going to fall to fund balance, let's just say.
Okay, and then my last question, there will be like an open house or a survey, like similar, will it follow a similar thing, just like we do with Mayfest?
Exactly, to what Mayfest parked it, yes.
Okay, so there'll be a public input time, time to gather here, online surveys, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fosler. Okay, no one else has anything to discuss? Okay. No, we're good. We have a motion and a second, I know, that's, can we get a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passed unanimously, thank you. All right, on to item, agenda item 9B. Conduct a public hearing and consider an act on the first reading of Order 2025-72, adopting a tax role, adopting a tax rate and levying ad valorem taxes to the fiscal year 2025 through 2026 to provide revenue for the payment of budgeted municipal expenditures and providing the tax assessment records severability, severability-
Good Lord.
-and an effective date and proper notice and meeting and move to include the September 30th, 2025 agenda for a second reading. Madam City Manager.
You have to open the public hearing.
Oh, no, no.
Presentation, then, then I open the public hearing.
Colin, will you pull up the, the item I just, I'm sorry, I'm all lost today. I'm going to blame Councilmember Fosler, she threw me off my game today. We were working on the, the budget till 5:30 or so. So, this is what is in the staff report, and considerable fund balance, we do have a drawdown, and at the 5040, we still end up with $387,000 above the required fund balance. Again, I was uber-conservative in, in the budget, and if during the year we're not meeting projections, we have the ability to do mid-year adjustments, whether that's an increased transfer from the enterprise funds, or that is a further hold on additional staff hiring, purchases, et cetera. So, the proposed recommended rate is .5040. And I'm just going to say for the record, I know that the council is tired of hearing me say it, but Ellen and I love you, Ellen, so our, our evaluations are 304,000, according to the appraiser, they're anywhere from 304 to 335. So, if you paid attention to our revenue forecast that Laura gave earlier, we are ahead of revenue projections where we were based last year, so I'm, I'm comfortable and I'm confident.
All right, thank you. All right, now, I will open up a public hearing for agenda item 9B.
I'm going to stop playing mayor, I'm sorry.
Tell you, I like, we'll talk about it in executive session. No, I'm kidding. All right. We don't have any comments on this? Okay, all right, I'll close the public hearing. He threw his bag open, because-
No, no.
You don't, you're good? Okay, we're closing?
No, no, I do need to speak, we'll close the public hearing.
Okay, it's closed. Council, Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland.
Okay, council, well, I was doing some digging today because I have always hated the words that we believed that the state legislature made us say whenever we set the tax rate. And Section 2605 of the Texas Tax Code says that "A motion to adopt an ordinance resolution or order setting a tax rate that exceeds the no new revenue rate tax rate must be made in the following form," which is exactly what is in our packet, and we've always been told you have to do it this way. However, you only have to do it this way if you're setting your tax rate above the no new revenue rate. If you're setting it below the no new- If you're setting it below the no new revenue rate, like we are, or at the no new revenue rate, it doesn't have to use this language. You still need to have a motion to approve the tax rate at whatever it's at, but you don't have to have the other stuff in here. The, the purpose of this wording is to punish municipalities for raising their taxes by making it very, very obvious that that's what they're doing. But we're not raising our taxes, we're actually lowering them. And so, I move that the property tax rate be set at 0.5040 per $100 valuation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
0.5040, correct?
0.5040.
Perfect.
Per $100 valuation.
And the only discussion I have on that is, I want everyone to realize that's zero dollar increase. Zero, so, it's a good thing, because look around you at all your other places, and they're not getting that.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passed unanimous, thank you. All right. We got one more coming. Just for that, yes, finally.
This has been, like, a goal for me. The entire time I've been on council is to get rid of that second clause, and every year, we're like, okay, let's lower the taxes more, we'll get there eventually. And then I'm like, what, we don't have to read that?
I, I want to point out to the council that Mayor Protem Kirkland was deep into tax code today.
Yes.
Deep into tax code.
Reading the law.
And, and finally, got with me and said, read the tax code, please call the attorney. So, we were, we're down in the bowels of the local government code, just so you know.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Kirkland. All right, on to agenda item nine C. Consider an act on resolution number R-2025-131, authorize the reallocation of funds for the riverbank stabilization. Hello, Ms. Laura.
Hello again. And the riverbank stabilization project is designed to create stabilization on the east bank of the Colorado River between Fisherman's Park and 71 that would prevent further erosion. It includes adding various rocks and sediments deposits, as well as vegetation to prevent the erosion. The city was able to secure a $2.3 million in funding via the Community Development Block Grant, MITMOD grant. This does include a city contribution match of 800,000. In that 800,000, it includes costs for both design and project management. A little bit of funding history, in 2003, the city took out bond fund with the intent of setting aside $3 million for this project on a prior grant that the city was not awarded. In February of '25, staff brought a resolution to council to take that 3 million that we had setting there at the time and reallocate that towards Blakey. Since we have reallocated those funds to Blakey, we were able to, one, secure the old Iron Bridge to get that rehab going, as well as the 2.3 in MITMOD money to use towards the riverbank stabilization. So, what staff is bringing to you tonight is to take of that 3 million originally allocated for the riverbank that we initially moved to Blakey to bring 8,000 of it back to complete the riverbank stabilization.
800.
800, 800,000, sorry, yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland.
Hello.
Okay, so this one gives me heartburn. I think I would summarize it by saying, riverbank stabilization is going to be at, near the bottom of a long list of very important things that we need to do in our city. We have Blakey, which we're proposing taking money away from Blakey that we don't yet fully know the cost of, so that would concern me. We have other roads that we're working on rebuilding, like Water Street, Linden Farm. We have discussions about rodeo arena, we have discussions about parking garages. All of those things are things that a council member would look at when they have finished with their time of serving the city and feel proud that they had done them. But I would postulate that we wouldn't necessarily feel so proud about riverbank stabilization. And so, the idea, I mean, I know that, that the vast majority of it is funded with a grant, that's great. However, the city still has to commit 800,000 to it, and that is a lot of money, given these other projects that we're talking about that we also need to, to work on. And I, you know, if I saw that each of those things was fully funded, and we had this that was left, and we were at the end of those other projects, and, and we wanted to do this, okay, maybe so, but I, I just, I'm very hesitant. And so, my question is in the area of, is there any way that we can maybe shrink the scope of this project so that it will cut down on the amount of, I mean, the grant that we would need, but also the, the funds that the city would have to match with? And so, that's the nature of my question. And I do know that we have a section in Fisherman's Park, there is a, I want to call it maybe a 12-inch pipe, and maybe it's 14-inch or 10-inch, but, you know, somewhere in that ballpark, that's sticking out of the ground, what I would call 20 feet. Maybe it's 18, whatever, but, and the, the ground used to go too near the end of that pipe. So, there is clear evidence of some erosion there, right? And if I were the, a landowner, and, and I said, you know, hey, I want to get this thing fixed because I don't, you know, I don't want to impact the sidewalk or the walkway, I don't want someone to get hurt, those are all important things, and, and someone said it was gonna cost me more than $50,000 to fix that, I would start to feel like someone was stealing money from me. And, and so, this thing is much larger in scope than just that one section. But, you know, I guess I wonder, do we have other sections of that part that's as bad as that one spot? And if we do, then I'd like to know more about them, cool. But if we don't, I mean, can we maybe just shrink this down to that one section under the bridge at Fisherman's Park? Do something that, that fixes it, because it, you know, I don't want it to take out the, the walkway and, you know, you know, cause future costs on fixing that, but, man, $800,000 of general fund money is a lot of money.
So, Mayor Protem Kirkland, let me show you some pictures. The, the short answer to that is yes, we can shrink the limits of the project. But I do want to share with you some pictures that are super, Colin, I sent you a PowerPoint. So, if you'll go to slide number three. This is some of that discharge point that you're talking about that has eroded and, and continues to erode near the sidewalk. The next page is where water channelizes, and it's, it's probably the most eroded area. There was an area at the old Iron Bridge, but you had a change order at the bridge not too long ago. If you recall, there was some areas that needed to be addressed ASAP. So, that will most likely be addressed as part of the bridge reconstruction. I would say that the, the limits, Colin, if you could scroll through some of these pictures, that's where some of the water's coming from, if you go to the next one. Some of that. That's coming from the library parking lot, it's not draining, and those, those things just continue. So, I understand your concern. For me, the biggest issue is that area at Ferry Park. And then, it's not even going to address the massive erosion on the bank, it's actually just addressing the toe, right, to stop any more from coming. We still have to address what has happened. Some of those improvements at Ferry Park, where we thought it was great to put super spongy stuff underneath the playground, then just let water run off quickly and erode. So, every action has an equal and opposite reaction, and that's why we have to think about the things that we're doing in areas that are super flood-prone. Short answer is, yes, absolutely, we can shrink the limits of the project and come back with a different amount.
And do we have a timing risk, like, completion of the project for the funding, or anything like that?
Well, I think the CDBG people are just, they're getting tired of us, because we were going to do it at Blakey, and then, as with Reverend Johnson, you can't do certain things in advance of the grant. So, we knew we weren't gonna be able to do it at Blakey, because Blakey needed to be moving at warp speed. So, we intended to move it to Puerto Plata, which would make that connection at 71. Well, Puerto Plata doesn't qualify income-wise, and so, there's that. So, this is a also-needed area where it does qualify, and so, we can come back and say, well, we changed our mind again, but I think they're gonna get tired of hearing from us and saying, well, you really don't know what you want to do then, so, bye.
Okay. Well, those are my questions, thank you.
We can absolutely table it to next week to shrink the limits of the project and come back with what that proposed cost assessment is.
Do we, do we know how much it's eroded over the years, from like, where it used to be? I, I can't, can't like, per se, really recall, but I know that it was, you know, had a little bit more distance between that sidewalk and the river than what it does now. And I know, we, we don't know what's gonna happen natural, natural disaster-wise or rain-wise, and what gets sent down here. You know, we always catch whatever happens to the west of us, north of us, right, it all, we always send it down. And so, I mean, it's times when we've seen the Colorado fill up the park. And, I mean, we know what water does with dirt or any other surface, eventually, it's gonna make it move around. And I'd hate for us to find ourselves in a bad situation, you know, like just the most recent flood events. You know, if we have that, you know, two more times, and they have to send water here, I know it's gonna erode at our bank even more. And to your point, though, I, I know there's a lot of things that we want to hang our hat on and be proud of, but I for sure don't want to be the folks that didn't think about not washing away our beautiful Riverwalk in downtown Bastrop. So, just, just something to consider. And I don't know if the 800,000 is super extreme or not, but definitely, we can look at some, I'd like to look at some other options, but it is a necessity to protect that riverbank.
Well, I think from a, from a staff perspective, we can, I, I'm always afraid that these projects have scope creep, always. I mean, I, I will tell you, again, sorry, Stan, engineers and attorneys are not my favorite people, they just are not. Love you guys, you're a necessary evil, but, you know, the projects, you know, what seems like a simple solution rarely ends up like that, and then you end up paying the, you know, we, we get the hourly list from the engineering firms, you're paying the principal and the secretary and the dog catcher and everybody else. So, what started off as a smaller cost project has now sort of scope creeped. So, I'm happy for you to table it, there's no emergent super need, we can wait till next week. We've got some issues, too, that I think we want to inspect. LCRAs has this going on in some of its areas, and so, we want to go copy, what's LCRA doing? And is it costing LCRA, you know, $3 million, so?
Councilmember Pluckett.
Yeah, I mean, this is one of those projects that, right, isn't fun to spend money on, it's like insurance. You want to talk about another group of people. But, but, you know, for decades, you know, the city of New Orleans took that, took that money that was made for the, that was given for the levies, and it was cool, because whatever they, I'm sure whatever they spent it on, they, you know, they were glad to have that. But dad gum, if it don't work out that way, and it, eventually, it won't, you know? So, that's, that's my thought on that one.
Thank you, Councilmember Pluckett. Councilmember Meyer?
And the only thing I want to add is, because I'm down at Fisherman's Park all the time, and I will tell you, it is, when you get a lot of water down there, especially the picture right there, it's pretty dangerous, because you got people now that are, you know, we're all walking to the sides, and some kids are slipping in the mud, and, you know, one guy's fishing down there on the side by the river, and somebody goes sliding down. So, my point is, it, it really is kind of a big deal when it really does rain a lot, because it's, it's kind of a danger also for the public.
All right, thank you. Councilmembers? What would you like to do?
Motion to table this to September 30th meeting, so that staff can look at ways to reduce the cost impact.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second? Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, passed as unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. All right, nine D, conduct a public hearing, consider an act on the first reading of ordinance number 2025-67 for a zoning concept scheme, request to rezone the project from PEC Employment Center and to Plan Development District, the PDD, with a base district of P4 for the area described as being 7.39 acres out of the Steel Yard subdivision, Lot 3, located at 2002 South Highway 95, Bastrop, Texas 7602, within the city limits of Bastrop. Mr. Cowie, how you doing, sir?
Good afternoon, mayor and council. This is just a carryover from last meeting y'all had. Want to be sure for the public information, to know what we're talking about again tonight. This is the prop, the ISA, the Public Works Yard, they're on 95. Proposed development system of a couple different town halls. Purple is the mixed use consisting of first-floor retail and was proposed, three stories of residential above. The orange is the proposed restaurant. Not gonna go into all the details of the zoning. What we came from at the last meeting, you know, for those that got into your deals in the staff report, I want to go over with you. The goal tonight is be sure we covered. If you look at page 470 from your last meeting, this is the items that we came up, that's in the staff report, is request a traffic impact analysis, so basically, we want us to address the traffic concerns, amend the parking, to have adequate parking for the residences and the proposed commercial, understanding we only have a parking ordinance for residential bedrooms, none for retail, but we know we need parking for retail and for the residences. Have discussed with Linden, the community, the connection at Linden Street, the punch through the Concern Zone 95. Did I go too far, do we have to go back to it? So, there was a proposed cross-access connection here at the bottom that's gonna service this development and the future development to the south. So, again, the concern was this traffic flow, traffic connection, the connection to Linden that may increase traffic within the residences. Hoda Community Open House facilitated by the city, and in contact Bastrop Youth Baseball and Softball Organization. And again, the goal tonight is be sure we have the concerns listed. We have a October 1st, again, October 1st, next Wednesday, at the Convention Center, an open house, where the developer and city staff will be there to, you know, hear the citizens' concerns, comments, et cetera. So, the main thing we request is information, get out to the public and everybody that can attend that has any concerns or questions or information need about this project, again, October 1st, Convention Center, 6 o'clock. So, again, the concern is...
And with that, the previous motion at the previous meeting was that we would table this to the next regular council meeting, which is today, 9:23. In light of not having the town hall meeting until 10:01, we're requesting that we postpone to 10:21, after we've gathered feedback from the community.
I think that is a fair thing to do.
And to clarify that, Sylvia stated earlier, there's not a meeting in October, we're too soon for the 30th meeting, so that's why it's so far out for the 21st day.
Understandably so. Councilmember Meyer?
Yes, just on one of the concerns, too, I know we are gonna contact the little bit, make sure that we contact the senior citizen center there, too, please.
Again, that's the purpose, seniors, okay? Anything else, council?
No, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, I'm gonna open up a public hearing. Do we have anybody that came in, said anything, want to say anything? No?
No.
All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing.
So, I'll move to table till 10:21.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, council, thank you, Doc. All right, item nine E. All right, item 9E, uh, discussion and possible direction regarding Senate Bill 1008 relating to state and local authority to regulate the food service industry and its impact on local alcohol permitting and licensing. Hello, Michael.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, so as you're all aware, after every legislative session, municipalities are tasked with.
Sorry, can I stop here real quick?
Sure.
Oh, yes.
Uh, any, are you going to say anything that's going to require me to recuse myself? I'm just looking at the agenda. I didn't see anything, but since I have a restaurant, I didn't want to.
Well, we are seeking direction on how to deal with payments that have already been received and licenses.
Which I've paid, so I don't think that would affect me. Any problem with that, Stan?
No, not on those facts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pluckett.
So one of those bills that we were looking at was Senate Bill 1008, um, which the, the intent of that bill is to reduce duplicative fees for businesses with multiple licensing requirements. Specifically, it prohibits municipalities from charging fees if the business has already paid a fee to the state, the county, or a public health district. Specifically, it says this applies to food service establishments, retail food stores, mobile food units, roadside vendors, and temporary food service operations. This bill went into effect on September 1st. As I'm sure you recall, we began about six weeks ago collecting on alcohol fees and trying to bring businesses into compliance with our code of ordinances. This in effect has taken that right away from us to do so. So at this point, staff is asking what, looking for suggestions from Mayor and Council on how you would like to handle the fees that we've already collected, which is give or take about $3,000. And how we should go about dealing with the checks that, I, I started holding the checks once I found out about this bill. If we're going to start refunding money, then we do not need to process those checks.
Councilmembers, Councilmember Pluckett.
I mean, given those facts, I probably should.
These probably should. Recuse themselves, yes.
To clarify, is this.
I wasn't sure what this was about.
Only after September 1st have funds been received after September 1st?
Well, so we, we did before September 1st receive funds and issue licenses. Once this bill came into effect, we continued to receive prior to and after this bill, we continued to receive payments. I held those payments until I could meet with Mayor and Council. So some fell before the September 1st deadline, and then obviously the ones that fell past that date, we would not process.
So just to be safe, just to be safe, Councilmember Pluckett is going to go ahead and recuse himself from this agenda item?
Yes, sir.
So we can still get a legit vote?
Yes, sir.
So Mayor Protim Kirkland.
What's this, what, what question, I know you're looking for, for, for feedback, but in like, in what area? For instance, um, are you proposing that we go back to some, uh, date before September 1st and refund payments that have been made or only up through September for, like, I'm not.
Well, that, that would be the direction that we're seeking. If we're going to stop collecting, so we had 34 businesses come into compliance.
Right, but we have to stop collecting, correct?
Right, and so now we're going to stop the other 34 businesses that did not come in compliance or getting through without paying.
So basically, right, those, so it's, if I'm understanding correctly, it's either we're going to have everyone pay because half of the group already paid and the other half didn't, and we want to make sure everyone's on the same scale, and then we can move forward.
Well, what, what we want to do is make sure that we're being fair to the businesses that did come into compliance. If we're not going, we're, we're in a position where we cannot collect any further. So do we want to, out of fairness, refund the people that did do as requested and come into compliance with city ordinance?
And so the, the law, does it forbid us, and by the way, this is not what I'm interested in doing. This is, I'm asking for boundary conditions. Does it forbid us from taking, uh, you know, forcing people to come into compliance for prior years' payments?
Uh, we chose to not do that at our, at our last, or not the last meeting, but the meeting that we approved this alcohol permitting process due to the fact that our invoicing previously was not consistent.
No, and, and I know that, but I'm asking in terms of the law, does it forbid us from going back and requiring those payments to be made?
We, we could technically go back.
Still could go back.
We could, and, and the course of action would be to contact TABC and they would place a lien on the license.
Yeah, and I'm not at all proposing that. I'm just, because for instance, if you had told me, well, no, we're not, we're no longer allowed to even do that. Well, then that means, you know, there, there's nothing we could enforce upon businesses if we chose to do so. Because one of the problems is that because of our inconsistent invoicing, we hadn't collected money from businesses for several years. And then some of them came into compliance, I guess, right?
Yes, sir.
And so they paid us several years of this tax.
Well, they paid us one year's.
You asked for only one year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so then back to the question I asked, so you're asking about a scope of timeframe just for which months and years and?
Just for the 2025, 2026 apartment.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Got it. Thank you.
And it, it has a budgetary impact of about $5,000, nothing super significant.
And, and where the difficulty in it comes in is your city permit expires at the same time as your TABC permit. It's not all the same day, so there are some that would not have to come into compliance until, let's say, October. There were some, um, businesses that came in, even though they weren't due until October, and paid for their 25, 26 through October of '26. So we're not really in a position to, to give those permits out at this point. We still have to, we, let me correct myself. We would still have to issue them, but at no pay.
Okay, I'm clear now. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protim. Councilmembers?
I can make a motion.
Yes, sir.
So I motion that, uh, we grant back the 25, 26 payments that were made by all of the restaurants and providers that paid them.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you, Michael. Thank you, Council. Passes unanimous. All right, can we get Councilmember Pluckett back in, please? We made the right decision without you. All right, on to agenda item 9F. Consider an act on resolution number R-2025-158 to establish boundaries and standards for the creation of the South End District bounded by Water Street, Chestnut Street, Highway 95, and Gutierrez Street. Mayor City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, give me a correct call.
You've been locked and loaded with them tonight. That's why Colin been having trouble, you know, it's a little bit more than normal.
Just a little bit more than normal. So this is the, um, South End Cultural District that we've been talking about for a few months now. And the, I'm sorry, I don't have the map here. The proposal is to, number one, establish the boundaries of the district. And then, two, also, let's talk about what we won't be allowing in the district because that seems to be of major concern to folks as we talk about the creation of this district. It seems there are people who believe we're going to be, um, doing some requirements of residents in the district. We're going to be putting in an architectural overlay. We're going to be requiring historic. We're not doing any of those things. The South End District is really creating a sense of, um, place and space and giving it a name that has, it's already called that name. This is just, you know, making that official, um, creating some works of art and creating places for folks to gather. At, uh, a few council meetings ago, you already created the park at MLK, that large swath of land. We have improvements in the bond for improvements at Kerr Park also. So this is just, again, solidifying what's already there. Let me get this picture over to Colin so he can bring this up right quick. And my, things are going to work at some point. Okay, Colin, if you can, if you can bring that up. Now, we have this boundary at Water, Chestnut, Highway 95, and Gutierrez. But I understand Councilmember Lowe may want to modify that boundary just a bit. The areas for art installation are at the underpass at 71 and, um, what is? Water Street, and then further up near Ferry Park. So those are two highway underpasses that could be beautified with arts and some, um, historic installations, so. Councilmember Lowe, anything you want to add?
Councilmember Pluckett has something right quick, if you want to. You're fine. He threw his light on from the jump.
No, well, you, you know, put something on my head there, Sylvia. You said that it wouldn't, you know, do anything to restrict, uh, you know, things that go on within that area. Would it make it easier for future councils to restrict what goes on in that area? I wouldn't want to do that either.
Well, no, you would have to do.
We're not creating a historical, you know, I don't want to do any of that stuff because that's where you wind up getting people telling you what color they, you got to paint your house.
Exactly, so, um, to do an overlay district that you're talking about requires the public hearings at Planning Commission and requires the public hearings here at City Council with the stipulated restrictions that you are intending to put in place. That was a concern for residents from the very get-go that now we're being told what color to paint, what materials to use. And I, I do remind you, one of the first things we did away with in the B3 was that doggone pattern book, so.
Exactly, and that's why I just wanted to make it.
Yes.
Uber clear that we're not slipping back that direction.
No, no, sir.
Councilmember Lowe?
Yes, there were a, uh, we looked at the map and, um, I've got some, a few calls, one call in particular. There were a few streets that aren't currently included, uh, in the map. It's actually only three. But, um, ignoring those, we probably ignore several historic houses in, in areas. Paul Sebel, um, that intersects with Gutierrez, De La Rosa, the Lee families there. Jasper intersects with Paul Sebel. Uh, it was the Lee and Hopkins family. And also Newton, it intersects with, um, Martin Luther King, and that would include the Jefferson family. So, uh, those might need to be some, uh, changes that, uh, are looked at.
So that's essentially changing the district, really at the southern portion, on the other side of Highway 71, just jogging that line.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I do recall someone having a.
Sort of.
Concern about the northeast corner, um, of the 95 and 21 section there. Is that not a concern anymore? You, sir, I don't know if I can, but like, I, I know you had mentioned that, you know, you're part of 95, and it kind of just stops at 21 and 95 right there.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I thought I remember. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be out of pocket. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't.
Well, no, originally, it was, it didn't go all the way to 95. And he was concerned that, um, we'd be leaving out sections of Emile and that kind.
Okay.
So we moved it from MLK to 95.
All right, thanks for the clarity. I just want to make sure we're getting, looking out for everybody. You gotta give me crazy looks. I won't look out for you anymore. How about that? Councilmember Fossler?
I have a question about the header of the resolution. It does say that we're establishing boundaries and standards. Like, do we need that word standards, or is it, is it literally just a boundary? Because standards does kind of imply, s, okay, I, I'm going to strike that. I'm done, thanks.
Okay, anyone else? All right, councilmembers, we got a motion?
I'll move to approve, uh, Resolution 2025-12, 158, uh, with the amendment that we strike the word standards in the preamble or the title.
Second.
And amending the boundaries.
Oh, are we widening the boundaries? Yeah.
Yes. Yes, and add the. Add the new boundaries, the three that Councilmember Lowe. Yes.
Paul Sebel, Jasper, and Nelson. Newton.
Newton.
How about we do that as a friendly amendment, and I'll go ahead and pre, uh, pre-approve it?
Councilmember Kirkland, you have something?
Has that been seconded yet?
Yes.
Okay, um, so this does set standards in it because it says that, um, it's the intent of the city that no additional architectural or overlay restrictions shall be imposed upon residents as part of this designation. So it, I mean, it sets a standard and, but does it in a way that doesn't set additional restrictions.
Right, and I, and I agree certain, like, there needs to be somewhat of a standard of how things are going. Not in the standard of you got three different colors you can pick to paint, but a standard of how you're going to function and operate in this district, correct? Is that what you were?
No, I'm just saying that the resolution as is, um, says that there's no additional architectural or overlay restrictions imposed upon residents as part of this designation, and that is a standard.
Right, that's what I'm, that's what I'm, I'm saying. That's why you're pointing it out.
Yeah, I'm pointing it out because we just struck the word standards, but there is a standard in the warehouse clauses, so.
Yeah, that standard really has to be there, absolutely, to enforce. So I, I don't think we need absolutely not to have standards.
Because I mean, we're, we're absolutely trying to do what that just says.
Yep.
By not creating, okay.
Do, do we have to do a friendly now?
Yeah, so, uh, I guess then I would like to request a friendly amendment that we, uh, reinsert the word standards the way that it was originally written.
All right, don't you want to add? Okay, yeah, I'll take that one.
All right, can we get some clarity on that? Because we've friendlied it up quite a bit real quick.
We're basically just back to the original resolution.
Right, I, I understand that, but let's, for direct purpose of records and having everything correctly, can we reestablish that, please? Is that good, Stan?
I think you've reached your limit of friendly amendments, but yes, that's good.
Thank you, thank you. We all stocked up here.
I accept.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Councilmembers, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you.
Did we get the friendly from?
We have the friendly from Councilmember Lowe, correct? Yes. No, do we do, no.
We got my friendly, but I didn't know if we got yours.
Yeah. Yeah, Kevin took it. Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you.
All right. 9G, consider an act on a resolution number 2025-167 to solicit the services of a professional engineer through a request for qualifications who will act as engineer of record for the wastewater treatment plant number four expansion. Madam City Manager?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. This is exactly as it sounds. We need an engineer of record for the wastewater treatment plant. It is a specialty, and so we don't, I don't have that among our IDIQ, so we're going to go out for RFQ.
Mayor Protim Kirkland?
That's a lot of acronyms right there.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes unanimous. All right, we have agenda item 9H, which we are striking from the agenda tonight. And it will be on a future agenda item. So, um, so being that we are striking it, I don't think there's a need for any, a comment on it. So, um, now we move on to agenda item 10, executive session. Agenda item 10A, city council shall convene into a closed executive session pursuant to Texas Local Government Code, Section 551.072, to deliberate the purchase exchange. Texas Local Government Code, Section 551.072, to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property related to the Pine Forest Six Development. Agenda item 10B, city council should convene into a closed executive session pursuant to Texas Local Government Code, Section 551.071 and 551.072, to seek advice of legal counsel to discuss and deliberate regarding the proposed sale of real estate property based, located along Jasper Street. It is now 9:20, and we're going to executive session. All right, everyone, it is now 9:47. We're back from executive session. No action will be taken. On to agenda item 12.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Bastrop, for staying with us tonight. Y'all have a great night. Love y'all. See y'all next week.